A minute. Sorry, one minute, folks. All right, everyone, so thanks for coming tonight. Good full house. That's great to see. This is the December tenth, twenty twenty four Town of Oakland Commission meeting. This is the last Commission meeting for twenty twenty four. We start a new year. So if everyone could please stand for the pledge and remain standing for an invocation. Thank you. It is a long agenda, so buckle up. All right, Elise.
Okay, roll call Commissioner McMullen. Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield. And Mayor Taylor.
I'm here. Thanks. All right. So it like, like Marilyn said, it is a long agenda tonight. So we're going to start first with the proclamations and presentations. There are no proclamations, just presentations. So I'd like to first call up Lake Park Natural Gas. Brett? Your mics. There we go. Perfect. Speaking of the mic. Thank you.
Get positioned here. So Commission, Mayor, Stuart and staff, thank you guys for having us, you all for having us over here tonight. Got a what, what I believe is a really important topic to myself, but a really important topic that I think for the city and for the state and for the nation as a whole to talk about this evening. So I know we've got a long agenda, but I'm going to talk relatively fast and keep the presentation relatively short. So that we will leave it open for questions at the end. For those of you who don't know, I think you've got a copy of the presentation on your desk. Going to first slide, Lake Park Natural Gas, we're the natural gas provider for, for West Orange and South Lake County. Right now, we serve about twenty nine thousand customers as a whole. That can range from commercial, industrial to residential customers. We have a, have a about a six hundred and twenty one square mile service territory. We have very large service territory. Relatively speaking, that twenty nine thousand customers with a small penetration. Well, we're going to try to improve that. I've been with the district now since January. I'm following up Sam Davis, who was a sixteen year CEO for Lake Park Natural Gas, and I've been in the utility business now for about twenty six, twenty seven years. Spent my time in the electric, gas, water, telecommunications side of the business. So I pretty much have a, have a well-rounded understanding of what we're doing. So, so one of the things when the, the board brought me into the district, they wanted me to look at what our opportunities were and what the threats were to the district. What I found is, is that the majority of the threats that, that were being posed, being posed to the, to the residents that, that live in the individual towns. And so when, when we started looking at those issues, we put together what we call our, our natural gas, our energy choice initiative. What does that initiative mean? The initiative that we have is, is an initiative to assure the right to choose the energy that you need for your home, right? Right now, there are some things going on at the federal level. We've had some actions taken at the state level, but not a lot has happened at the local level. Not a lot has happened at cities and town level. And so that's where we've started trying to focus our energy on making sure that we can guarantee an energy future in all of our communities that provide not only electricity, solar, not a lot of wind energy going on around here, but also providing natural gas, natural gas renewables and hydrogen. And I think if you've been around, you've heard a lot of the greenhouse gas effects and a lot of environmental talk that's going on. All of those, a lot of those have talked about trying to eliminate fossil fuels, but in the state of Florida, that's not a reality. And so hopefully by the end of this presentation, you have a better understanding of what natural gas means, not only to the city, but to the state and of course the nation. So, so why do we need to have an energy choice? What does it really mean? So there's a movement that has been going on, next slide, move has been going on here for about the past ten years to try to push overall electrification of, of, of your homes, of your businesses, and the electrification movement really is a movement by the electric industry to monopolize the energy landscape. It's trying to eliminate a lot of the competition and try to convince you that electricity is the cleanest, most affordable, most dependable energy sources out there. Well, I think we all understand that in the, and, and here in just recently, obviously with the hurricanes that come through, electricity is not really all that dependable, right? You know, it, it, it's one of the things that, that you need a backup power source for whenever situations happen like the hurricanes come through and knock the power out in areas for multiple weeks. From an affordability standpoint, I'm going to give you some, some information about that. And then overall, from a cleanliness standpoint, I'll give you that as well coming up. But, but again, electrification lives on a misconception. If you get those on a misconception, you're fine. Lives on a misconception that, that is equivalent to gas in every way. But the problem is, is in the state of Florida, electricity relies on natural gas. So what would it mean if electricity, if we were to be in a totally electrified country, state, city, right? So the next slide here. The, the Energy Information Administration finally put out last year a statement of, of cost that says that if consumers, if we were in an all-electric society this past winter, not this winter, but winter past, it would have cost us an extra hundred and thirty seven billion dollars to heat our homes, to take care of ourselves over the winter season last year. Well, the thing is, is that winter season, that is a single peak in the winter. We also have a summer peak here in the state of Florida, which really would mean that we would probably have double that amount as far as overall cost here in the state of Florida. But again, you're talking about nationally, a hundred and thirty seven billion dollars is what that would cost us in energy costs alone. So what does that mean in the state of Florida? So in the state of Florida, we are about seventy five percent natural gas generated electricity. If you look at the table there, you see the long bar, but the short bar at the bottom is the non, non hydroelectric renewables. That's solar. Well, even that solar there has to have backup, backup supply that's natural gas. Even though we're seventy five percent firm, we're really about eighty percent electric generation because we have to pay for that backup generation for solar power. Whether we use it or not, we pay for it. So what does that mean? Next slide. That means again, seventy five percent of electricity in Florida is derived from natural gas. In the conversion process, sixty percent of the energy content of natural gas is lost when you convert from natural gas to electricity. What does that mean to you? That means that sixty cents out of every dollar that you spend on electricity in the state of Florida, you're flushing it down the toilet. You're just throwing it away, right? Because if you're using electricity where you could be using natural gas, natural gas is ninety three percent efficient. So that's seven cents out of every dollar versus sixty cents out of every dollar that's, that's a waste. We're really, for most appliances, we're better than ninety three percent efficient, but I'm a conservative person. I try to keep it at that. So what does that mean? The state of Florida, right now, at that, at, at our production rate, how much electricity we use, we're losing about seven point three billion dollars in wasted industry. So seven point three billion just in the state across the year. What that also means is I'm, I'm a civil environmental engineer, so I, I, I understand the impacts of the environmental, but that also means there's forty four million metric tons of excess CO2 that's submitted into our atmosphere. So whenever we're talking about the overall effects financially, from an environmental standpoint, using natural gas is the best option we have right now, but it's not a good option when we could be using it a smarter way. So in state of Florida, next slide. So, so what does it mean? In state of Florida, back in twenty, twenty twenty one, the governor passed a bill that, that prevented local governments from banning fuel. So there was a big movement back in, in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty one, looking to ban natural gas and fossil fuels across the nation. Berkeley, California was the first city to actually put a ban in place banning natural gas from any new construction going in. You know, that happens at a grassroots level, that stuff catches like wildfire. And then again, there was, it was going to be the next city that's banning, the next city is banning, the next city is banning. So the thing was, it, it went for about two years and those bans kept going. And then that's when Governor DeSantis realized, hey, I need to put something in place to protect the citizens, protect people of Florida from someone actually going out there and passing a ban restricting energy. Well, the thing is, that was a good movement, but what happens when you don't have natural gas available already? That really only protected people who had natural gas and from banning it from existing use, right? What happens when you don't have natural gas? Well, there are communities out there that are being built and they've, it's become more and more and more prevalent where communities are being built and natural gas is being excluded from developments. They putting in the natural things, electricity, telecommunications, super water. They go in, those are the natural utilities. But in the state of Florida, again, if we're going to continue throwing away sixty cents out of every dollar, we need to make sure that we're using our energy the appropriate way. People in us, in a, in a development need to have the ability to choose which energy that they want. So whenever we have developers that don't live here and aren't part of our communities, you know, again, Oakland's Oakland, we're pretty close knit here, right? And, and, and most of the developers are local developers. And I think what we found here in Oakland, that they care. So most of the developments have natural gas in them, but some of them don't. And we want to make sure that we're, we're having natural gas available to every community, to every home, to every customer that wants it. So again, families that are in communities that don't have a right to choose, that all they have is electricity or they have the ability to put solar on their houses. But if you really look at the solar market, there, there, that's a really difficult market to manage because, you know, if hours out and, 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 you know, it's overcast that day, you still may not have. So again, we want to make sure that we're bringing a choice to the community. So looking at, at local families, local families, whenever you're using electricity instead of natural gas to heat your water, to cook your food, to dry your clothes, or, or in a day like we're going to have tomorrow, when it gets a little cool, to heat your homes, you're losing about a thousand dollars a year per, per home. Okay? What does that mean? In West Orange and South Lake Counties, we went back, pulled statistics, we've got about a hundred and twenty seven million dollars a year of lost energy costs in our service territory right now. But that equates to about a hundred and twenty seven thousand houses that we've missed getting natural gas in. We're going to try to work on recovering that. That is actually part of our energy choice initiative. So with every development that, that continues to go with electricity only, that number gets worse and worse. So what does it mean to, to the, the town of Oakland? So we went back, we pulled the numbers of what customers we actually have. We've got about twelve hundred homes in the, in, in the town, and that equates to about one point two million dollars of, of, of lost income, lost energy in, in the town. So we're going to be working diligently, not only trying to stop the electrification developments coming in, but we're also going to be trying to grow natural gas usage inside the cities and expand. So with that being said, hopefully you see, you know, what the issues are, what the cost, what the impacts are, and what are we going to try to do? Well, what we, what we have promoted and we've promoted it in, in pretty much our whole service territory is what we call energy choice development. Energy choice developments are developments that require natural gas to be in the development right along with electricity, right along with telecommunications. So what we're doing is we're asking the cities to put forth ordinances to require natural gas to be included in any and all new developments that are being. There are certain restrictions to it. It's a development that's, you know, of a certain size. So if someone's coming in and they split a lot and try to split a lot from, from one, one residential to two residential, they come here, it really doesn't apply to that. But when we have a developer that's coming in and developing land, we want to make sure that proper infrastructure is there. Why is that important? Because we come in after a development is built and we try to put the infrastructure in for natural gas, it costs us about three times as much to put it in. So that right there, that right there is, is, is we're only serving one customer for every three that we should be able to serve the customer if we're not able to get the energy. So right now, where we stand is, is we, we passed three ordinances already. Hopka passed their ordinance back in August. Winter Garden passed their ordinance this, this past month in November. Claremont's having their second reading tonight. So hopefully about right now, Claremont is passing the ordinance as well. We have the ordinances, of course, we're requesting ordinance here in Oakland. We're going to be in January, we're going to be in a place. So we're, we're, we're making sure that we're blanketing the service territory whole. Because what we want to do is we really want to have a genuine impact on, on who we are and what we are. So the whole point is, is to try to, 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 to set a movement where Florida says, not only do we want to have energy choice, but we want to use our energy the right way. We want to grow, continue growing the right way. We don't want to make the mistakes that other states have made. You know, one of the things I've got here is your choice is a powerful tool. We want to just make sure that, that the residents of Oakland, that, that the residents that live in West Orange and South Lake Counties, that they don't have the choice taken away from them by people who don't live here, who aren't part of our community. So next slide. Whenever I talked about Berkeley, Berkeley was the first city to put a ban in place. One of the things that I've said consistently across my career is, is there's a lot of things go on in California that you, that you don't want to do, that you want to learn from. But this is one of the things that we do want to learn from before we make the same mistake. If we continue letting electric-only developments go in, we're going to make the mistake that obviously here, you see that, that in Berkeley, they've repealed their gas ban. They put a ban in place in twenty nineteen and they've already healed that ban because they realized that the people that live in that area, the communities can't survive on, in electric-only because it's so heavy, the impact is so great that people can't live in the area. So they've actually repealed their ban. Well, 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 that's what I want to do. I want to make sure that we learn from the mistake that they made. They made a ban, but in essence, when we have all these electric-only developments going in, we're banning it in a way because we're taking voice away from people. So we want to learn from that. And so in closing, obviously, we want to try to make sure that everybody has a choice between electric, electric-only development or natural gas. Any questions, comments?
Thanks Brett. Any questions from anybody? Just a couple I have is, you know, you, you mentioned that twelve hundred residents in the town, that's existing residents?
Yeah, and that's, and that, that's the old data that I had available from the census. So yeah, most of that's existing. Most of the new developments in Oakland, we have, we have gotten those and we've been able to get natural gas into those developments. They've been a little bit smaller, more custom, but you know, we've missed a lot of developments and we, we've got a, a master plan in place, which is what we call our phase two of the energy choice, is to get into those existing developments. So we can focus re, putting the money back into those existing developments and recapturing those customers and, and along with capturing.
Okay, that was my question was, how do you, how do you service those existing houses? And is there a plan in place to, to bring the option of someone who would want gas, who already has an
So we've actually got, we actually, I think we just received permit approval that, that we're extending a new main up tubs and, and around. We're bringing some more supply into the area so we can start branching off and getting some of the existing developments. You know, the hard part is, is we've got to catch the houses at the right time because not many people are going to have a house that's five years old. And we go to them and say, hey, change your, change your water heater out to natural gas. Let's, let us run a natural gas service. So we, we're, we're being strategic in what we're doing. We're going to be building a plan out for each one of the, the towns and cities to where we hit those developments at about the right time. The sweet spot's about between eight and twelve years is where you want to hit those. Whenever people have, have depreciated the, the water heaters, depreciate it, maybe their stoves to where they do consider putting them in. So it'll be strategic in what we're doing, but we're planning on putting the resources back in to getting into the existing. I mean, we, I want to recapture all hundred and twenty seven thousand. Probably won't happen in my time, but, but that's the plan. That's what we're putting in place.
You guys would offer incentives to somebody who wants to switch over?
Yeah. So, so what, so what we're doing is, is before, we were trying to incentivize the developer to put natural gas in the first place. And part of this ordinance is, is requiring if the developer pays for it, then we're going to go ahead and we're going to redirect the incentives back to the person making the decision to put gas in the house. So the builders will get the incentives, or in a case where it's the existing home, they'll get incentives to put natural gas in. So what we're trying to do is offset the cost of them, not only putting the service in, but hopefully give them enough revenue to be able to help pay for their.
And is there a financial benefit to the town with residents hooked up to natural gas?
Yes. So, so the, 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 the town of Oakland is one of our franchise towns. Got fourteen total franchise areas, the two counties and twelve cities. And so for every, every home that we have natural gas in, and the gas that we sell, that we pay a franchise fee back to the city, and that's at a rate of about six percent. Everybody gets the same thing. So it comes back to the city in the form of a franchise.
Six percent of total use or volume, volume sold?
A percentage of volume sold and, and the revenue, the six percent of the revenue off of that volume. So, so if we change the rates, then it's based on whatever.
Who else? There's another question on safety, bringing, you know, new lines into existing neighborhoods. And what would be the cap on how many homes you're looking for on a neighborhood that has a hundred homes to get into your program if it's only one or?
So, so, so yeah, that's, that's part of the, the strategy that goes into it is, is looking for the homes that are at the right time. We'll be going into those developments with, with a lot of them with no commitment. You know, what I have found is, is, is you hit them at the right time. I worked, I worked at the other gas utility district in the Panhandle. We did this program. I developed it there. And so what we've seen is if we hit it at the right time, in that eight to twelve year range, and we go out there and we do our job marketing inappropriately and make facilitating, making it easy for people, we can get about a sixty percent penetration rate on those homes. And that really is that kind of that breakpoint for us. If we can get sixty percent penetration, it'll actually start paying for itself. So we'll, we'll be going in there with a, with a plan that we'll be extending it based on our, our existing capital budget. Before we put this plan in place, we would go to the homeowner association and say, hey, can you afford to put it in, put in, you know, two hundred thousand dollars worth of natural gas infrastructure? Most of them will look at it and go, no, we're not going to, can't put a bill for that. Well, we're redirecting the capital funds that we put into, to the new developments back into the existing. So we're, we're going to grow hopefully. And, and there's a phase three to the plan. Phase three is an education thing, kind of the presentation I've made here. We're going to be educating kids at the third and fourth grade level. We've actually started some of that, but we're going to start doing more what we call energy literacy training, and that's to understand electricity, gas, you know, solar. You know, I'm, I'm, I work for, for, before I came to Florida, I worked for the fourth largest utility in the nation. They were the number one wind utility and the number four solar utility in the nation. I want to make sure that our, the kids that are growing up in our communities have, have, have good understanding of what energy is, where it comes from, and how it works, and what decisions we're making. We've got a generation out there believes, you know, if I plug it in, that it's good, then it's good for us, right? I mean, that's, that's the way that they do. They need to understand where our energy comes from. So phase three of energy choices is an education piece as well.
So basically, right now, the, the first stage that you're in right now is getting this into the ordinance for the new neighborhoods. Moving forward, you'd like to take over, you know, every single home for the benefit of saving for our town. We would like to see, I would like to see at least a map out with the main lines that you already have existing, or you already have pre-planned to see strategically which neighborhood would be the next. Some of our neighborhoods here are historic, historic towns, which doesn't have HOA, or just sporadic, you know, less, I would say, condensed homes in one neighborhood. There are lots of big, so, you know, all those obstacles of the dirt road, asphalt, non-existent sidewalks, you know, if you could show us that on the next stage, we can get closer to more real.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're completely open. We'll, we'll share what, what plans that we've got, like currently in our capital plan for expansion work. And then also we can, we can show you where we're at. And also I can give you some idea of, you, you all know better than I do, kind of what the vintage of the developments are. You probably know them off the top of your head, you know, how old certain developments are. But it gives some idea of what timeframe we would be going into those. And what we've done is, is we can, and we'll be sharing that information back with, with the town manager as well. In a pop after ordinance was passed, we created a, a map for them to be able to look at and say, hey, you know, the natural gas is already in this area, you know, how are we going to grow in that area? So after we get everything down, we're going, we're, we're sharing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Got a comment. Wondering, see if we can bring Mike Parker in. I, I, I know Sam Davis was around when he first started talking, making this conversation. Not saying right now, but Mike Parker, you've been a part along the journey. You know some of the things that have been transpired.
Yeah. So our department processed those three right away permits that you'd mentioned recently a couple of weeks ago. You, you know, town of Oakland already has gas mains running through on State Road fifty. These three permits will allow it to, for, you know, just so you guys know the streets, you may not know, but comes down star, star, it goes all the way through to Brierly, it goes down to Brierly Farms, comes back up to Oakland Avenue. Those three permits hit a very large portion of what I consider the.
That's why, that's why I just want to bring him in because I know he. Been developing. I was good friends with him.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to go back and forth.
We're committed to doing that work. We're committed to doing that work irregardless of the ordinance. I mean, we, we've committed to growing into the town. We just want to make sure that we don't have to waste money in new developments when we, when we could have got it locked. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
A quick question. When you run the gas mains in like a new development, do you require the, the builder to put gas in every single home? How does that work?
Uh, no, sir. So, so what the ordinance that we proposed and that we've passed, it, it only requires the natural gas to be in the development. It's our job to sell the choice to the customer. So the builder, whether the builder's the one building a spec home, we've got to sell the benefits of natural gas to them. Or if they're, they're, they're building a custom home for a home buyer, we're, we're going to make that sale at that point in time. We're not trying to force it in. There are a lot of townships that have ordinances like this that require every house to have natural gas in it. I worked at a couple of those that were monopolies, you know, and, and, and they took that monopoly power and required natural gas be installed at every house. We, we're not pushing that. The city of Leesburg actually has, their ordinance requires every house in a new development has to have at least two natural gas appliances. The stove and the water heater has to be natural gas in every home. I'm about choice, right? I mean, I, I believe it's the right choice and we educate people, people will make that choice. But, but we just want to make sure that we don't lose that, that awesome front end from the infrastructure standpoint, from developers that, that, you know, for the most part, a lot of the developers don't live here. And what we've seen is, what I've seen is, is that, that we incentivize the customers the appropriate way. Again, we're giving them, them back instead of putting the money in the developer's pocket, the local builders and the home buyers will put the money back in their pockets to be able to use in the community.
So a homeowner could actually just hook up one appliance than if they wanted to. They want to hook my grill up, you could run gas line to the grill.
Yes, sir. Yeah, a grill. One we see a whole lot is natural gas generators, that we don't get a lot of demand out of it, but natural gas generators, when the power goes out, a lot of people, when, when, what I've seen in my past is, is when a storm comes in and knocks the power out, next thing you know, we have a flurry of people wanting natural gas generators installed. And the problem is, a lot of them, they call us and we say, well, we don't have natural gas there. It would cost ten thousand dollars to get there in a development that's relatively new. We just want to try to limit that exposure. Because here we are, we got, we got electric companies who are incentivizing developers not to put natural gas in, but yet they turn around and put natural gas in as their backup power at their facilities. The new Duke facility just went in, they have natural gas generators there backing up their power. But, but yet you don't have the ability to do that at your home because of what they're, they're, the electrification movement. Yes, sir. What, what, what they'd only do is, is, is our, our designers will, will come around, they'll put flyers on your door, they'll let you know that natural gas is coming. And then for, it gives you an opportunity to call in and see what it would take to get gas in. And, and again, we, 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 I pride it myself and I found that this district prides itself on doing good work too. The biggest concern I have in a, in a, in an established town like this is the quality of the work that you do. And we actually did a development carriage point here recently that we've been getting, consistently getting positive comments and appreciation from those. This was one of those developments we went in. That was the right time. We went in, the homeowner association gave us approval to go in there, but they didn't pay for it. We went in there, did that go in there, but they didn't pay for it. We went in there, did that job. No complaints, no problems. They talked about how good the crews did the work. So we're gonna do quality work when we do those type of jobs too. That's a big concern I know in the towns is making sure that you don't make a mess. Because, I mean, with all the telecommunications going on and the mess that those guys make, we don't want to be, we don't want to be associated with that. Hopefully you never have any regrets.
What about the existing residents who have tanks already, like buried tanks that companies come to deliver gas to?
Propane, yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, so, so that's, that's one of the things that we're, that, that's part of that, that phase two. It's not only facilitating the, the infrastructure, but facilitating conversions and things like that. So we're actually gonna be rebuilding our, our, our marketing team over the next year to help facilitate. Because the thing is, is, is most, most homeowners, when you talk to them about changing appliances out, it just, you know, they, they can't imagine the headache that goes along with that. Like pulling permits, doing all that kind of stuff. We're, our job is to facilitate, not only to sell it, but to facilitate. We're gonna make sure that you have good contractors, not through us, but we're gonna get an approved contractor list. We're gonna get a process in place to make sure that they know what they can do and a, and a, and a timeframe that we can stick to. Because most of the time, the customers want to know, you know, how long is this gonna take? How long am I gonna have to worry about this? No, nobody wants to worry for, you know, two, three, four months about how they're gonna get it converted. We're gonna make sure that they can get it done in a month.
Great. Anybody else? All right. Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Moving on to the presentation. Tom Harmer, who's going to talk to us real quick about an overview of charter review assistance that was offered by the Florida League of Cities. Good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. I heard that really quickly. So I'll, I'll, I'll do like the previous speaker, try to move and talk quickly as we go through. And you can stop anytime or wait till the end. E- either way, thank you for inviting me this evening. I'm a, I won't bore you too much with my background, but I'm a retired city manager who last year moved to the Winter Garden area. So I'm a resident in Oakland Park. I was thirty-seven years in local government. I was the city manager in Titusville, Florida. I was the county administrator in Sarasota County. And I was, my last position was the town manager on Longbow Key, which I'm very glad I retired in twenty twenty-three before the two recent hurricanes that they're dealing with now. And, and so tonight I'm representing the Florida City County Managers Association and the Florida League of Cities. And I'll explain that as we go through. Go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Oh, no backup one, I'm sorry. Didn't look up fast enough. So there's two programs I'll just touch on very briefly. The senior advisor program, so I'm a senior advisor, which is a retired city manager. It's, it's a state and national program. I represent the international city managers and the Florida city county managers. We're a group of retired managers in Florida. There's about eight or nine of us located around the state. We're volunteers, so we offer advice and support to local governments and especially the managers and to the managers. We can come in and talk. We, we work with elected officials, especially in smaller communities on strategic planning, on former government discussions and all of those types of things, and charter review. And we work with the League of Cities on charter review. And I'm sure you're familiar with the Florida League of Cities. I met one of your commissioners. Most recently, I was teaching the Cities One-on-One class at the conference this past year. And we talked a little bit in there about charters. And, and I was asked, well, what services does the league provide or the senior advisors provide? And I'll talk about that here in, in just a second. So the League of Cities has this very specific program for elected officials for a number of areas, but one of those very specifically is part of review process. And if you go to the next slide, just to kind of put it in context, obviously, when, when I talked to the commissioner earlier this year, I was made aware that you do have an upcoming process. You're getting your kick off. It's on your agenda for later this evening. You have very specific language in your charter. And I think, you know, the public understands that the commission even more so, when you deal with ordinances, you know, they're done at the local level. You, you work with your attorney and your clerk and your manager and you, you have first readings and second readings and you adopt that and you make the decision as the elected bodies. The charter is a different animal, if you will, in that the, the people who make changes in the charter are the voters. And so your residents are gonna vote on that. So it's a higher level than, say, your ordinances and your rules and your policies and your guidelines. And, and so in your charter, and it's very common to have that, you have a recurring review process and you're coming up on your ten-year review. And the charter is very clear. It says you shall appoint and fund a charter revision committee, a review committee, and there will be five people on that committee and then each member shall make an appointment. I won't go into that in a lot of detail. I know that's on your agenda for later discussion. Go to the next slide, please. And so very briefly, the goal is, is I wanted to at least make you aware of the senior advisor program. Typically, those cities that are less than ten thousand, less than five thousand, we especially target those as offering our free services. Because they may not, they don't have the ability to hire a consultant sometimes to do some of the things where we may be able to come in and provide advice and support assistance to the community. And so you're aware of that. And the charter review process I mentioned, very specifically the Florida League of Cities, Lynn Tipton, and some of you may know Lynn Tipton, she's retiring this year. She's been with the League of Cities for many, many years. And her retirement reception is today in Tallahassee. So she was going to be with me today and talk to you about the process, but because she's in Tallahassee today, I've kind of surrounded my slides with hers. So these next series of slides you'll see are slides that she's provided to me that she couldn't make today and she trusted me to, to cover them for her. So as I mentioned, charters are important. They're unique. It's like the constitution. It's voted on by the public and the, the voters. It's not something that the commission can do upon themselves. But they're all unique. And there's four hundred and eleven cities in the state and everyone has a charter, but they're not all exactly the same. It's that broad framework and it, it, it explains the vision of the community and, and generally the structure of the form of the government and the role of the mayor and the commissioners and the manager and, and other key positions. They're generally, at, at least the recommended length is about eight to ten pages. I, I will say, I counted jurors and the clerk can correct me, but I counted sixteen pages. So, but there's no perfect number. We've seen them twenty pages. It, it's not a page issue. Contact, content is so much more important. And so you, you can create the charter through this process that happened many, many years ago, and then you review it every so often. Generally, what local governments do is they create a resolution though, when they enter that process. So with your town attorney and your clerk, you work on creating a resolution and you'll adopt that resolution that kind of sets the path, responsibilities, maybe duration, things like that of the charter review committee. May include the names of the members that are being appointed. But typically, it's kicked off in some form or fashion with a resolution. And, and we don't do that, but that's just, we're sharing with you. And, and I'll mention a little bit later, we've shared some example resolutions of communities who have recently gone through charter review process, just for, for your staff to review. Next slide. These are charter elements that you see in most charters. They're not always in the exact same order and the titles could be worded a little bit differently. You generally cover all of these things in your charter. Next, thank you. The size of the commission, if you think about, you know, that's covered in the charter. You, I'm sure are aware of this. Five members, which you have here in the town, is the most common. Some have seven. When I was the town manager for the town of Longbow Key, we had seven. When I was with the county commission as the county administrator, we had five. And so you'll see five as the most common, seven in, in certain communities over time that have either developed that way or started that way. And so the length of term is some item that's often discussed, two-year terms, four-year terms, three-year terms. How many terms can you term limit out? Those things typically are things that can be discussed and included in the charter. You know, the type of election, are you at-large? Do you have single-member district? Some communities have a five, I'll give you a Longbow Key example, five districts and two at-large. So five of the commissioners were voted geographically, actually in the key there, voted overall, but they represented a district and then two of them were overall. So those are things, again, that you'll find in the charter. And the selection of the mayor, how do you select the mayor? Some are elected, some are appointed from the commission, et cetera. That's stuff that you find in your, in your charter. And then the form of government. This is a council manager, commission manager, generally form of government, where you have the legislative body, you have the mayor who presides over the legislative body, and you have a manager that manages the day-to-day operations. That's really kind of the most common. Some cities may seek to establish a specific department in the charter, so that changes to that would require a referendum by the public. You have to be thoughtful about that because sometimes you may want flexibility because of administration and operational reasons to have that where you don't have to have certain things. That's why charters can get long, because you start putting too much in the charter versus that very strategic level discussion. Examples are listed there. Charter positions most often will include the attorney, the clerk and the manager, based on the commission manager form of government. So Lynn Tipton did a few high-level comparisons for the town. And so I included those slides in there. He took your population and then compared it to seven other municipalities that all were interior. They weren't coastal, trying to be somewhat similar based on Oakland being in central Florida. So there were seven areas that she looked at and felt were somewhat comparable. And all seven of those were council manager. It just so happens, when she did that and looked at those, they were all council manager form of government. They all had five commissioners, not seven or six or some other number. Go ahead, next one. And then, so you can see here who she identified for her quick scenario to compare them to. And they were very, very similar. So there wasn't a lot of disparate differences between those. One of the things that she mentioned to me that they offer is, they, they do this very high-level comparison, but as you go forward and the committee meets or if the commission wants, if there's a very particular community, because these services are generally free, offered by the League of Cities and/or the City Managers Association, they would take a very specific community and do a much more detailed breakdown of your charter versus their charter. You can take almost every element in the charter and say, here's that element, here's what the town of Oakland says, and here's what this other comparable. They said they could do that if you have one. If it's more than that, they would probably need to look at some other way to do that because they're limited on their staff to be able to do that deep dive. So best practices, one of the things I'm sure you're gonna be talking about is appointing citizens. The charter says that each of the commissioners will identify someone to serve. So that's really important. And you may want to have a discussion about how much, how much diversity do you want in the charter? Diversity is good and diversity could be having professionals, someone from a construction level, someone that, that, that doesn't work outside the home, someone that's retired, someone that's, you know, you could have a mix of individuals. There's nothing that sets what that is. That's up to you to pick. But picking a five people that have some various different reviews, oftentimes we find that to be helpful in the dialogue discussion and getting to some good feedback to you on things that may need to be changed or considered in the charter. Some basic things, these are public meetings and your clerk and, and attorney can help you with that, obviously. Use of a website to set the agenda, give the community access to when the meetings are, the meeting agenda, the meeting minutes, and ways that you can engage, engage the citizens in that. If a referendum is scheduled, you know, developing that FAQ for the website so the public can be educated on what they might be voting for. And then how you help get the word out on what may be on the ballot. And, and here's some, you know, more best practices, thinking about your charter. You know, charter power is an authority. And be careful that, you know, not granted to more than one entity. So if you said the manager's responsibility is this, and you said the mayor's responsibility is this, and it's the same thing, then that's not clarity. It should be clear that what the manager's responsibilities are in order to be clear what the mayor's and the commissioner's responsibilities are. A confusing language in election section, usually in the qualifications, what does it take to qualify to run for office? So looking at that very carefully. And then writing too much less is better is kind of the, the big picture. Form of government, just, you know, I think you guys are really good at understanding the form of government here, but the trend since the nineteen fifty's has really been towards that council manager, commission manager, form of government, which you have here now. And then we mentioned before, you're in a ten-year cycle. We see ten-year and fifteen-year periods as the most common. My experience, ten-year is the most common, which, which you have in your charter. There's some questions to consider. There's, there's resources for you to have. So, you know, in the, there's a model city charter and it's not recommended you just take that and adopt that because it's too generic and it doesn't apply to everything in the town of Oakland. But here's some questions that come out in the development of that model charter. Is the charter reflective of the current population? Is the council representative of the population? The way the council is, is vote, is voted and elected, both resident and business elements of the community when they vote, is, is that properly worded and structured in your charter? Does the charter address responsible professionalism? As a, a city provide opportunities for citizen participation in the process? You're appointing resident members to represent you and then you're opening up to the public. And that's really important. You know, is the city engaged in civic education? So these are things just to think about as you refine the process going forward and as you appoint the committee member. And I just, here's a couple of resources. You know, MuniCode is listed there. If you're, I'm sure you're familiar with MuniK, but MuniCode, but it's an excellent resource. It's, it's, it's online. It's so easy. If you can go to any city pretty much in the state and click and read their charter with just a couple of clicks on the internet and you have the charter there. You can search for information if you're looking for a form of government or, or, or the mayor authority or whatever. It's so easy to quickly get to that information and, and see maybe what someone else is doing if you have any questions there. So these are resources that are out there for both your staff and yourself to do a little bit of background as you see fit. I wanted to list a couple of, so we've gotten back to the green slides. Those, those previous slides were from the Florida League of Cities and Lynn. Here's a couple of examples I wanted to share with you. So if you ask the League of Cities, they'll tell you, one of the cities they really felt like did a really good job with charter review is the city of Venice in Sarasota County. And they really liked their process. So this is the city of Venice process. Now, this was specifically written for their twenty twenty-one charter review. But if, if you read through that, it, it has some really good things that you should be thinking about. It, it's, it's kind of a step-by-step. You know, confirm your scope of review. So is there something the commission is thinking about, needs to address, be addressed in this cycle? Is there something you feel really strongly that you want the committee to know as a commission, you need to look at this? We specifically want you to look at this. You can do that and you, and you, and you should do that. There may be items that your attorney or the clerk or the manager or the staff says, we think you should look at these items. And all of that should get conveyed to the committee. So when they're reviewing all of the aspects of the charter, they're making sure, you're making sure they're looking at those things that are important to you, that you want them to report back to you on. And, and so you see that as kind of the number one. Determine the appointment process for committee members. Your, your charter covers some of that, but there's some pieces to that, that, that you can talk about later this evening. You know, appoint them at, at a future meeting. I understand that you're planning to do that in January. Staff to compile suggested revisions. So that's kind of what I talked about from the council, from charter officers, from department directors, articles to be presented for discussion to the committee. It's suggested that in Venice, they take them two at a time. They'll take two sections of the charter at a time at each meeting, and they'll try to work through them that way and incrementally go through the six or seven or eight sections of the charter. And if they obviously don't make it all the way through, then at the next meeting they'll continue on. But try to, you know, it's kind of like eating the elephant. You try and take it one bite at a time and not just try to deal with the whole charter all at one time. So that's how Venice did it. Set the meeting frequency, you know, estimated completion of the review. You think about backing into an election. So like in your materials tonight, you're talking about a March twenty twenty-six election. So as you make your appointments and you work through that, backing into that March date, there's a lot of things that have to happen between now and then. And, and so ultimately, if the commission decides to put something on the ballot, you're gonna have to go through a public hearing process to do that as well after the committee work is done. So you want to factor all of that time in. That's their process. If there's something you can use out of that or, or not, that's just, I wanted to share that with you. And then I, I included information I sent to your clerk, three resolutions. City of Mount Dora recently went. City of Mount Dora recently went through the charter review process. Wildwood is going through their process now and Venice went through theirs a couple of years ago. And all three of the resolutions are a little bit different, but you can see and decide and use what you want there. But I've provided those to your staff prior to me coming here this evening. And then here's an example from the city of Wildwood. They put together a timeline. So it was very kind of clear from the very start of when the committee was established until, you know, getting to the ballot and items that be placed on it and just laying those key dates out. So everyone can be on the same page to kind of follow and track that through the process. So again, that's part of what we do is we're trying to provide you information. We're, we don't manage any process. We don't come in and do this for you. You have staff that does that. We're just here to kind of share what others have done, how you might use that to help you as you go through the process. I, I listed a couple of next steps. These are kind of recommended next steps. The resolution, some do that resolution after the appointment, some do it before. And I have two different examples I've shared, giving guidance to them on the parameters that we talked about that you want to emphasize as the elected body. And then your manager and your, your staff and your attorney may have others that they add to that list. Set the initial meeting. The committee then reports back to the county commission and then you make a decision about placing items on the ballot. So the, the League of Cities is here for when you kick off this process. A lot of these communities like Mount Dora, Wildwood, and others have asked the League of Cities to come in for the very first meeting of the charter review committee and sit down with them and kind of go through a high level of what their role typically is and what they should be thinking about. And then they back out. It's just more of a, if they're there for questions of what other cities have done and how they did it and, and all of that. And it's, it's a free service to the town if you want it. You don't have to do it. You can just do it all on your own. But just like me coming here tonight, when you kick this off, you can have a representative from the League of Cities. And some of you may know Chris Holly at the League of Cities. He oversees that effort. So either Chris or someone from his office would come down once you set all that up and, and be here to kind of go over an orientation to complement whatever your attorney and clerk are doing and, and answer questions and, and help provide follow up information that may be helpful. So that's why I'm here today. It's just a real quick, here's what we do, here's who we are, and you're embarking on a really critical process for local governments. Charter is a serious document and, and, and I know you take it seriously and you're going to be thoughtful as you appoint your representatives. And before you know it, it'll be March of 2026. So again, I'm, I'm a neighbor nearby. My wife wanted me to drive my golf cart to, to the meeting tonight, but I elected to drive my pickup truck instead. But if I can help Andy in any way, I'm happily retired. So I, and that's what we do. We, we offer that as a free service both through the city managers and the League of Cities. Thank you for having me today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Tom, any questions?
Thank you. Speaking for myself, thank you very much for actually coming out here on the invite. Try to twist your arm, but I mean, you're happily doing it. So I mean, you love doing it and I'm glad that you came because we need a lot of help, you know? Especially if it's free, it's welcome always, right? So, and just to guide our team, I know that I was part of the first, 13 years ago, I started in the charter. I was there with a group of guys, Fred Shepard, Warren Griffin, Mike Braden, Frank Merritt. And then we did have the town manager there. We had the clerk, Kimble Gay, and we had the attorney and we also had a, we even invited Bill Cowell, election supervisor. But they only came once in a while when we needed them. I would love that you see this, you know, the kickoff with the committee we choose for you to just give them an orientation. I think that we did a good job, so there's a few tweaks to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. And I, and I would say I've been through a couple of recent charter review processes over in Sarasota County. And one of them, this may not happen here, but the, the charter review committee came back with a lot of changes. And, and the town commission had several public meetings to sort through. How do we put that on the ballot? And do we list each one of those changes individually? Are those a series of questions on the ballot? Ultimately, in that particular case, the town commission said, no, we're just going to make it a rewrite of the charter. And they just, you were voting for a new charter. Other cities have listed eight or 10 questions and maybe six of them passed and four of them don't. The way the town did it, and, and for them, they were fortunate it passed. And there was one or two more controversial items on there than not, but, but still it passed and was a complete rewrite. I'm not sure you guys are in a rewrite stage.
No, I think we did the rewrite 10 years ago. Yes, we did. We had not.
I read it, I don't see.
We had not touched it for, I believe.
But you never know.
Decades.
You don't know what's going to come out of the process, but, but the end you have some decision to make on what you put on the ballot and how you structure that on the ballot. And that's where your town attorney, your clerk, and your manager can help you. And, and we're, we're here for them and, you know, for you as advisors.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to public forum. This is where we will address any issues that anyone has in the public that is not on the agenda tonight. Do we have any takers tonight? I'd like to speak on any issues. Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium and speak in the mic and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Ungaro. I live at 321 East Henson Avenue. We have a road problem down there. That dust down there is choking us to death. School traffic since the four way stops have been, they've been flying down our road. Well, that road needs to be taken care of. We requested to have it paved. It's supposed to have been paved a long time ago and never has been. So I think we got an issue. And, and especially when in the mornings around quarter to eight, eight thirty, I think the people don't want to stand in line in the school. They come flying down that road and that white powder dust we got just goes everywhere. And it's just choking us to death down there.
Understood.
Address that, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Andy, you want to kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing and?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. To answer your question, what we've done is we've tried out some asphalt material. We've tried all different types of materials. It seemed to dust, dusty. Tried some shell on one section of town and we just recently tried some asphalt milling. We think that we're going to be able to come back and do some more of the asphalt millings, but we're going to apply the material a little bit different this time along, on the road that would allow us to stretch our dollars a little further. The asphalt millings, on the project that we did on Gully, we tried to do that more how they recommend that you put that down for like a hard surface road. Being that we have a good base, we feel like we can just cover the existing layer of the crushed concrete or whatever material is that is on your road. We have all different types of materials in town. So we're going to come back with like maybe an inch of that material to cover up the dirt or the dust and then see how that, yeah, that performs. We're going to do a larger project probably here in the next several weeks. The issue is right now is getting the asphalt materials. So last I talked, I think the guy had about 14 loads that we want to find material. So we're going to spread that out on a road, probably Gully. We're going to do a larger section this time because right now we're just doing a block. We're going to do a large stretch and see how that forms. And then we're going to continue to put that type of material down.
Well, this is the white, the concrete stuff they put down there.
With, with the town's budget, this is going to be the only.
Dust is just choking us to death. It's awful. It's, it's worse than when we had the dirt, regular dirt roads.
Right. So what we'll do is, is we'll move around to some of the areas we know that has that crushed concrete on it and then hit those roads first. Once we determine, once we put this down, we just want to make sure we, we do a larger section that we don't come back and take it all up. But this is really down to the last material that the town is going to be able to afford outside of looking at paving the roads. So we're hoping that this works. We think it will. We're just going to apply it a little different than we did the first project. So give us a couple of weeks. Hopefully in January, at the January meeting, I can report back that we've done this road and everybody can go take a look at it. And then we'll give it another couple of months and then hopefully we'll be able to follow up with, continue to put that down on the town road. It is a funding issue, of course.
When they did that road, the neighbors, all the neighbors signed the petition out there to pave it and we was going to pay for it. And this, the town council rejected. They wanted to keep the dirt up.
Andy, I got a suggestion. The next road we try, the Henson on that stretch.
We definitely need, I mean, it's bad.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
And it, all the way from Star Road all the way down, East Henson down that way.
Let me go, let me go a little, I'll go a little further on that. I think that Henson between Star, which is paved and going into Winners Landing, you know, with the base material being there and Mike Parker, you can jump in here if you want, but that material is kind of ready to go where you could probably do a layer of asphalt. A one inch, inch and a half layer of asphalt.
I would, that'd be great.
And when I say an inch, inch and a half layer of asphalt, I'm not saying the width of a 24 foot wide road, but maybe a 12 foot, 14 foot wide width. If you look at the trail out here, the width of the trail, straight down there, that would, that would create that surface for to cut the dust down. And then the right away is still there, you just let everything come.
And if you do that, put some speed bumps.
Dust or speed bumps, which.
I appreciate y'all doing it.
If you'd like to go down, like we said, West Gully, if you want to go down and see what they have tried to do, we've gotten some positive feedback from the residents who, who have lived there on that street and it seems to be, it seems to work. Your, your, your road's in a unique situation.
It's really bad. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak on any topic tonight? No? Okay. All right, we'll close the public forum. Going on to the consent agenda, on the agenda tonight is a minute from our 1112 2024 Town Commission regular meeting, a release of lien for Winter Garden London Central LLC, encroachment easement for 525 North Tub Street, bid award for emergency debris service, and approval for the ability to serve alcoholic beverages at Oakland Heritage Day in Spear Park. Any questions or comments? Nope, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Moving on, ordinance, ordinance 2024-10. This is the second public hearing to the Second Amendment to Development Agreement to the Oakland Commercial Center PUD. Elise?
Okay, I'm going to read the title and then Sarah has a presentation. This is ordinance 2024-10, second public hearing, the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for Oakland Commercial Center PUD in ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development as recorded in the Public Records of Orange County, Florida, document number 20180584301, with the First Amendment to the Development Agreement as recorded in the Public Records of Orange County, Florida, document number 20190053646, to approve the Oakland Exchange Office Complex on Certain Real Property Owned by Racetrack Inc. as more particularly described herein, making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date.
Hello, Sarah.
I made it quick for you guys because I know it's going to be a long night. I'm presenting the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development Amendment for the Oakland Exchange Office Park. This is your second reading, so you have seen this before. The address is the southwest corner of Remington Road and Southern Railway. The applicant is JW2 Development. The owner is Racetrack Inc. It's a 4.4 acres. It's currently a vacant lot. It's lots five and six of the Oakland Commercial Center. And this is amendment to the plan development proposed for lots five and six. Again, this is an aerial view of the overall Oakland Commercial Center project and the two red parcels or lots are the lots and subject that we're going to speak about tonight. Again, this is an increase from their original 30,000 to 37,184 square feet. They're revising lots five and six to be smaller, 12 smaller buildings. They're looking to eliminate the landscape buffer between lots five and six since it's going to be an overall development. And then they are requesting to reduce the width of the walkway from six to five feet and are requesting to increase their monument sign from 32 to 42 square feet. This is the site plan for the project. Again, green dots are the trees that they're saving. So some key issues came out of the first reading. The dumpster enclosure location and traffic impacts. So on November 18th, the town bid meet with the applicant to discuss these issues. So for the first issue of the dumpsters, the applicant has prepared a enhanced landscape plan for how they intend to beef up that landscaping around the two dumpsters. We did have our landscape architect review this. They had submitted a previous version. He made some comments and they did tweak this to be, to the satisfaction of our landscape architect. The second item of concern was the traffic impact. The traffic impact study submitted by the applicant confirms that there is no sufficient impact to the proposed traffic. It was reviewed by Sandra with PD or CPH, who is the town's traffic contracted traffic engineer. I just wanted to reiterate the section 1633180 of the Florida State statute prohibits local governments from requiring a developer to correct an existing traffic deficiency, which is kind of where we're at with this project. The proposed project is only going to increase the previously approved traffic from the 7,000, I apologize. The proposed project is only going to increase the 7,180 square feet from what was previously approved, which equates to approximately 17 additional peak hour trips. I do want to point out that office trips are in the opposite direction of peak hour trips. So typically AM peak hour residents are heading outbound, whereas offices are heading inbound and the converse for, you know, PM traffic residents are heading inbound, offices heading outbound. The project transportation impact fees for this project is estimated to be around $200,000 and that can be used for future capacity projects. The applicant's traffic engineer, as well as the town's traffic engineer is in attendance. So if you have any questions specific to that traffic study, they are here to answer any questions that you have. So the development agreement for the Second Amendment is, is the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement is specifically amends the, unless specifically amended by the Second Amendment, all conditions of the requirements of the previous development remain in full force. So two updates to the amendment after the first reading. You guys did denial, did deny their request for the larger monument sign and you required enhanced dumpster screening around the dumpsters. With all the changes made and based on our review with compliance, staff does recommend approval of the ordinance 2024-10 for the proposed Oakland Exchange Office Complex with the enhanced dumpster screening and with the denial of the increased monument sign from 32 square feet to the 42 square feet.
Okay. Bring it to the table. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Some mixture. First move there, just, it wasn't even the traffic. So now we've got two gas stations and you got more kids. So you got, then we have another development. I think it's just a mixture of all the activity over there, which is good. I just think it just result, the growth that's coming, we always want to increase. I would say when Racetrack, when you really notice how congested it gets, you only got two lanes in and out. I think it's just a. I think it's just a result of our going on. So whatever we can do, um, to hopefully, you know, we can use these dollars just for that.
So, yeah, so, uh, impact fee dollars can use for continuing to keep the same level of service that, that's on that. So, not that it would work in this instance, but for example, if a turn lane is warranted where you have or something that you could use your impact fee dollars. The goal in fact is, is if a development comes in and those dollars would be used to keep that what was there prior to that. Is that correct?
Uh, that's generally consistent with the, the statutory scheme, yes. Um, I will point out that impact fees, uh, could be used to, um, address additional traffic impacts elsewhere in the town as well. That would be legal, um, and that would be up to your discretion.
Yeah. I would say my ask is that we keep this many of these dollars in that area as it continues to grow. I think we should, you know, do our due diligence. Making sure the place is walkable, make sure it's safe. Know the, we know the rules are, we know the ordinance are, what we can and can't do. To ensure, because at the end of the day, when those businesses come, we want to be successful. We don't want them to have any friction or challenges because if they bring some business there and then they start is a challenge, I wanna make sure. Stay, right? We don't want no where we can use these dollars. Two hundred dollars. Can go anywhere. There, it's in the beginning. Star resources to try to make. We definitely gonna need to do some kind of it's not walk. Really isn't, so you bring businesses. Make it walk, because if I leave my house trying to go to Race Track, technically I shouldn't, there is no problem. Across the street, but it's really unless I go to the corner and come down.
From what I understand, the attorney is that the money is in the bucket and we can be use it wherever. But we could also use some of the money from impact fees on this side over there. It doesn't have to necessarily be tagged for that area. If the need comes, safety and traffic is priority and keeping the businesses in there. There's also those businesses are gonna have be used by those neighborhoods. And I have to leave the town. You may have the, you need to go visit there. So it's a win-win for all of us. We just don't need to have just tag money there. We can move money from other places to help that area because that's, we wanted to be successful and safe like you just said.
I want that place to move. I can tell you right now, you can't walk. There is no safe way to walk to that.
So, um, I've, I've reached out to the traffic engineers for the town and I'll have them working on a proposal for traffic, kind of traffic flow analysis. So then anything that might have some of these questions. Hopefully when we get that, then we can come back and provide, come up with some solutions and then we can hear more money. And it may be if they're expensive improvement eligible to be used with impact.
We just don't wanna abandon it, period. We don't wanna look back and abandon it and let be reactive later.
Right, right, right. Yeah, exactly. Old is to be proactive. Because we know something's coming in, something was coming in years ago when we and that was always been the plan. Make sure that we do it, it's done smart way, thirty, forty, fifty years later, still.
Well, that's why I bring it up because I know, and granted, what's going on out there is applicant, hello, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Air Commissioners. My name is Jimmy Crawford. I'm an attorney with Crawford, Monica, Holt in at seven oh two West Montrose in Claremont. And I do represent JW squared, who is the developer of this site. We do have with us tonight John Schmidt, Wyatt Marks and Wayne King, all representing JW, JW squared. We also have Mohammed Abdallah, who is the traffic engineer with Traffic Ability Consultant. As we said, we would do at first reading is bring him back. I would like to ask that the record from the first reading get incorporated into this, so I don't have to, I don't wanna repeat anything that you guys have already heard. Uh, we have worked with staff for months and through several, more than several, I don't know what the next word is. Quite a few different versions, yeah. Um, we wound up reducing our square footage request to save more trees. And I think one of the most important things is go into one story only those buildings. Whereas they're allowed two or three under the current ordinance. The handout in the, over there gives a great overview, the staff report at two hundred and fifty pages or whatever it is is, is very detailed and gives it clearly. Happy to have our team answer any questions from the commission or from the residents. We, uh, love the idea of what they, they called, at least in Brad's email of eleven twenty-six, safety slash traffic pattern analysis. As long as that includes both bicycle and walking as well, and we'll cooperate with that and help any way that we can. That's all I have, uh, but we, like I say, we will be happy to answer any questions that either or the commission has, and we'll be standing by.
Awesome, thanks, appreciate it. Uh, okay, so this is a, uh, ordinance in a public hearing. So is there anyone in the audience that'd like to talk about this matter or have any questions about this matter? Yes, ma'am, come on up to the podium, please state your, uh, name and address, please.
Made a couple notes, sorry. Um, I will be very quick. Uh, first of all, thank you guys for answering my email, Andy and Brad, and getting back with me. Um, I would like to state that I never believe that developers should pay for anything. Um, I know that was reiterated with the ordinance. Um, I think it's an everybody problem. The town unincorporated Orange County, who's at the end of Remington, uh, the new development, residential development, as well as the Race Track and Palmer. Um, when I sent the email, I was wrong about one entrance being added on. Um, and I was wrong, there is a crosswalk, um, but I think it's twenty years old. Would you agree? McMullin, there is a crosswalk to get from John's Landing to John's Cove, twenty years old, worn out, can't see it from the overhead. If you locate Google Maps. Um, when we talked at the last meeting, we thought the traffic study was done on September, uh, twenty-fourth. When I looked at page one forty of Big Package, um, included everything, it was actually done on July twenty-third. Really odd time to do a traffic study when you have four hundred homes back there. Uh, kids aren't going to school. We have, our local school is, um, doesn't have buses. So every single family member has to drive their kid to Oakland Charter. Um, then we do have four buses that come up a day. High school and a special needs class, and they all do the two Um, and then, so the study was done and then it refers to a twenty twenty study done for seasonal really odd one to pick again, everyone was sitting at home in twenty twenty. Not a good synopsis of what happens during different times of year when everyone was on lockdown in twenty twenty. Um, page one forty-five of the big package talks about the pedestrian and bike walkability. Um, state sidewalks are in good shape, they are, they are, but again, crosswalks are faded. Um, page one forty-six refers to, um, addendum N or attachment N, the Oakland Complete Street spacing. Um, if you look at that, it shows, none of that refers to our side of the town. It's all up and down Tub Street and Oakland Ave. Has nothing to do with it. Um, in May, Andy brought up that he's doing the bike walk in Florida. I understand the studies underway. Um, on September ninth, Al said that we are doing an inventory and the metro plan. He met with Amy Beckman, he said to have Andy reach out with our plan and they will implement it. Um, you were only concerned about Oakland Avenue and Tub Street as stated in these things. The four hundred homeowners over there need you to be concerned about us as well. Because just like Commissioner McMullin said, we can't walk or bike anywhere. We're stuck, we're isolated. We don't feel part of the town and we don't feel safe for our kids going from our home to the gas station to get their soda. Um, so, thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Appreciate it. Any, oh, yeah, go ahead.
And when I mentioned about the metro plan, they have a plan for the turnpike. To redirect that intersection by Remington, seven eleven within the next five years to alleviate a lot of the traffic, the bottleneck coming from Claremont, not Oakland or Tub. That's what, so we're gonna alleviate that intersection to bring Remington and those residents in that, those neighborhoods out quicker into the turnpike and off the street. That's what I was referring to.
Do you go back and read the minutes? It said where you were talking about the bike walk money grants to be directed towards Tub Street and Oakland Ave. That's specifically what I'm talking about, the grant money from that. We need some of that grant money on our side also.
I will bring it up in the next metro plan meeting.
Thank you.
I will.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else have any discussion on this project in the audience? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back, uh, to everyone here. Um, any questions or comments further? No? Okay, so we'll entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
May I clarify that that did not include the sign variance? The sign is thirty-two, right?
Sign is thirty-two.
Understood.
So, uh, going back, what I'm referencing is our developer agreement that I see here that's got the changes and inside that, just for the record. Uh, approval of a site plan changed to the site layout and development standards within Sub Area C Neighborhood Office. The five-foot landscape buffers between lots five and six shall be vacated. Monument signage shall be no larger than thirty-two square feet. Interior sidewalk widths shall be no less than five feet. Maximum office space shall be no more than thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four square feet. Site irrigation shall be provided by onsite wells only. No town provided potable waters permitted to be used for irrigation. All trees shown to be saved on the approved site plan in Attachment A must be properly protected to assure its viability during and after construction. Before, during, after construction, any change to the trees shown safe shall require approval by the town commission. Town commission shall determine mitigation requirements for removal of any trees shown as saved on the approved site plan in Attachment A. And last, the dumpster enclosure shall be screened by enhanced landscape screening as shown in Attachment.
Thank you very much. We will try to make you proud.
Great, awesome. All right, thank you very much, guys, for building there, appreciate it.
They're not done. They're not done. They have a part two.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm moving on to other policy matters.
Just don't let them go yet.
Don't let, don't leave yet, yeah. Are you gonna hang out? Oh, you're done. Oh, sure. Awesome, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, so, uh, that's our ordinances. Now we're moving on to other policy matters. And, uh, sticking with this project is the appearance review for proposed Oakland Exchange Office Complex. All right, Sarah.
Uh, this is the appearance review for the item you just saw. Again, the address southwest corner of Remington Road, uh, JW Square Development LLC is the applicant, owner of Race Track. Approximately four acres, existing is vacant. And the intent is to amend the plan development for lots five and six for the proposed office exchange. And what you're reviewing today is the design slash appearance of those buildings. Um, in the, um, in the approval of the, uh, plan development, there were some previous architectural, uh, characters that they were looking for. Um, these are just some of the items that they included in that. Um, so the proposed buildings are designed for Office Park. And if approved, then they'll be a, a part of the approved plan development amendment and the amended, uh, development agreement. Uh, the proposed office buildings are consistent with the buildings shown in the PD amendment and the proposed office buildings, uh, are, designs are on the following slides. There's quite a few, so feel free to kind of go through and if there are any ones you wanna come back to, we can. Almost there? All right, so, uh, all the many slides that you just saw have been reviewed, um, by the ARB on November fifth. Um, and the ARB unanimously recommended approval of the office, uh, building designs. Um, and then they also went to PNZ on November nineteenth, and again, they were unanimously recommended approval of the office designs. Um, staff recommends approval of the proposed buildings for the, uh, Oakland Office Exchange Complex. Um, I'm here to answer any questions, but again, as I mentioned, they have their architect guys here to answer any design questions you may have.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, anybody have any questions or comments about the architectural review? Are you good? Any questions from the audience or anything? Any questions about the likes it? So hearing none, we'll bring it back. Uh, no other questions, so entertain a motion, correct?
I'll make a motion to, um, accept the recommendations of the staff opposing the building design.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We're, before we leave that, uh, before we leave that, uh, project, hey, hey, Mike Parker, um, is it possible to just take a look at that crosswalk and see what you can do about restriping if it needs to be restripped or anything? On Remington, Remington? Doesn't work, it won't pick up. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
What'd you say? Okay, so, uh, yes, we will, we will look into that and, and see if it can be remedied uh, prior to, and if not, I'm sure it'll be part of, uh, CPH, uh, package that Andy was talking.
All right. Thank you. Okay, uh, so moving on to another parents review for the proposed Harvest District Mixed Use Building. You again, Sarah.
Again, all right, this address is, uh, fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one South Road. Again. All right, this address is, uh, 15,551 South Road, uh, fifty, or State Road 50. Uh, the applicant is Gemini Land Development LLC, owner is New Horizons Investments LLC. The land is approximately five acres. It is currently vacant. It is in the urban corridor design district. And the intent of, uh, today's discussion is to review and, uh, the appearance review of the three-story mixed-use building. Uh, this is an aerial view of the subject property. Um, the town commission approved the plan development and the development agreement for the Harvest District back in March. Um, just to give you a summary, it was a maximum of 72 multifamily units. It had a maximum of 40,000 square feet of commercial retail and a maximum story of three. Um, and the approval of the, the approved plan development included some conceptual designs of the buildings. This is a site plan, it's kind of hard to see, but this is a site plan of the proposed buildings. Um, and then these were the renderings that were presented when they went through the, uh, PD process. And then these are the, uh, designs that they're coming through today to, um, get asked for approval on. These are just some renderings. What that building would look like. Um, and, and these renderings are what was presented to ARB and, um, P&amp;Z. On November 5th, ARB, ARB reviewed them and unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of the buildings. And then on November 19th, P&amp;Z also recommended approval of the buildings. Uh, and with that, staff recommends approval of the building design as well for the Harvest District.
Any questions from the table?
Just a copy. You know, when I saw the renderings last time, I said, what's going on with this? Doesn't look like the, what you usually build. And you said it's very expensive to build here. Well, it is expensive. Oakland is expensive, but thank you for redesigning and putting the brick in the character that we have here. I like what you did.
Great, thanks. Anybody else? No? Any, anyone from the audience have any comments or questions? No? Hearing none, okay, great. Alaka Westhouse said, Franco, I hope that your project looks as good as the pictures. That's how you, that's how you tell if a guy's really good at a building. So, yeah. Absolutely. All right, so we'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to accept the recommendations for the P&amp;Z, uh, proposed mixed-use building and, uh, and P&amp;Z. And staff, all three of them, uh, the proposed mixed-use building design.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, school speed zone enforcement program is this?
Yes, uh, good evening. Thank you for giving me the next hour of your time. Um, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'll be quick. Uh, about, about six months ago, we brought about the, the idea of the school speeds, um, enforcement program to the commission, which everybody overwhelmingly approved the idea. Uh, over the previous six months, we've spent time looking at different companies that offer the program and, and the differences between the companies. I've attached a spreadsheet in your packet, or it's actually on the back of your packet, uh, comparing the top three companies that we researched. Uh, some companies simply just did not fit with the town of Oakland and, and what our ideals are, and these top three companies did. Uh, as you can see in the spreadsheet, the majority of them are relatively the same as far as what they offer. There's a few distinct differences. With the main one being that only one of the companies has an existing RFP, and only one of the companies guarantees cost neutrality, meaning that the town will suffer no financial burden should this program not be successful. Uh, those were two things that were pretty important to me, but as you can, you can see the different things that they outline. Uh, between many, many emails and phone calls between myself and Stephanie, um, we have come to a determination that the middle column, Altiment, would be the company that would be what we would recommend, uh, to go forth with the contract. We need to create, and Stephanie's in the process of creating the, the ordinance and resolution. Is that correct? Just the ordinance?
Yes, the ordinance.
Uh, which is required by state law, uh, but they, they, uh, once, if approved to continue with this company, which seems to be would be the most beneficial for us moving forward, uh, Stephanie will continue working on. The ordinance get all this finalized and we can move forward getting this program up and running in the school speed zone. To answer, I've, I've spoke with a few citizens throughout the past six months in the town that were concerned about a couple of things. To answer questions, uh, the, the biggest concern would be by state law, this, the speed zone enforcement only runs during school hours. Uh, we would not be using this to run radar from, uh, you know, during the weekends and things like that. That's what we depend on our police officers for is to do proactive patrol. We would not be using this program by state laws designed strictly for safety of students during school hour. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I have a representative from Altiment here, uh, Lorraine Johnson is here. She's she knows far more than I do, but would be willing to address any questions as well.
Any questions for me, ready? Um, on the, on the, uh, selection, so 500 on the violation notice fees?
Yes.
Uh, the two are limited. This one's 500 included and eight dollars additional, so you get 500.
Per month, per month. And we did the speed study. All three companies came in and did three speed studies for us. And, uh, we, we're not gonna hit 500. We're gonna hit, I think, uh, I, I don't remember the exact number. It was less than 500. It was, it was somewhere in the 300 range, I believe, if I'm wrong. Uh, Lorraine has all the paperwork and, and the results of their speed study, and all three companies were within like two cars of each other. So that tells me that the accuracy is there. But, yeah, that was one of the differences. The other company that we were looking at is unlimited, whereas they offered the first 500. It doesn't look like, based off the current traffic trends, it doesn't look like we'll come close to 500 a month.
And then, uh, these cameras that we had talked before about getting a license plate, there's an issue?
Yes, good question, yes. So, uh, the, each company offered two license plate readers as a part of the program. But by statute, we can't put them in the school zone. We will put them somewhere else in the town, whichever, wherever we see fit, like preferably the corners of the town. Catch from activity that's through here, but, um, it will, it will be actually separate from the school speed zone program itself. It's just a, a perk that the companies are offering with the program. The license plate reader itself will not be used.
Yeah, so, you got, you got to, sorry, you have to come up.
Good evening, Lorraine Johnson. I just also wanted to mention that we will not capture a plate of a vehicle if they are not going 11. So just because cars are traveling through the zone, if they're not speeding, our cameras are not going to capture the plate. Only take a plate if they are, they meet that threshold and criteria of speeding.
This is a license plate reader, not the school, not, you're not going 11 miles an hour in the school zone over it's, it's whatever you're talking about.
License plate readers are completely separate from our camera.
Right.
School's own speed camera system is only gonna capture a plate if they're going 11 over the speed limit in the school zone. Whether it's that reduced school zone speed time or the posted speed limit throughout the day. The license plate readers that capture every plate are completely separate. And the statute, school zone speed statute says that you cannot use the school zone speed cameras as a remote surveillance device. So they will not be used that way. I just wanted to make sure that's clear and that they are too.
Okay. So you have cameras on, on both sides. School zone. And then for the other reader.
Correct. The license plate reader is different from a school's speed zone camera. License plate readers we may put on 50, or we may put somewhere else in town.
Once for the school, it's a license.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a speed camera, and it takes a picture of the license plate, but doesn't do what a license plate reader does. A license plate reader, but actually, if, if a car is entered as a, the owner is a, is a wanted felon, it will trigger a, a response and notify the on-duty police officer. A school speed zone camera wouldn't do that, only a license plate reader would.
Okay, just for clarification, maybe I heard it wrong. In the school zones, uh, school zone, school, school zone's active, it's like miles an hour, I think in the school zone. That, that hits, that, uh, that license plate reader, that guy's going three miles, five miles over the speed limit of 25 in the school zone, that captures the guy, right? Does not. So I wanted to make sure I heard that right.
It's gotta be 11 over.
The law is 11 miles.
It is, now.
That's what the law says, so we cannot, so if someone's going five miles over the speed limit, even if you said, oh, we want it to be, we can't do that. The law says it has to be 11.
Regardless, okay, so your officers then would have to sit there and go, this guy. But he, can he stop the car?
Yes.
Sure.
Your officer's out there directing traffic, student's coming across and he sees a car going
through eight.
Five miles an hour over, you can stop him and pull him over.
Yes, just for us to use the speed cameras that, that the program is offering.
11.
It's gotta be 11.
Okay.
So, in order to
sending ticket.
In order them to, it, right, to mail them a ticket, yes, it's gotta be 11 over.
We still have watching off, so 11 an hour is a lot. It's a lot.
Sure.
School zone, 10 miles an hour over.
Sure. No, the, it, these cameras are not gonna replace the police officer, not like I'm gonna tell them go away. Uh, this is merely a supplemental tool that, uh, when a police officer gets a call, we only have two on duty, as you know. Should there be a traffic crash on 50 and both officers are there, now at least we have the ability to still monitor and keep the students safe.
So just for clarification, the, the school zone limits are what?
Seven?
No, I meant boundaries, I guess I should say.
Where the, where the flashing sign is, so basically right at Winner's Landing, going west, and then it's maybe
Not to quite the star, right?
No, it's, it's east of Star. Uh, it's east of the driveway that's to enter the school.
So, so it covers the, pretty much the school proper. That's what it's, yes. And, and there's no way to grease that as you come through? And the only reason I say that is I've seen, I've seen families and people coming up, walking up Star Street, their young kids, and are crossing over Star to get to the sidewalk. Uh, of Oakland and then walking down, especially, I mean, I know this has got nothing to do with it, but preschool is.
Right.
As well, I, I'll see that.
Zone. Yeah, uh, I know I, and I don't have the exact answer, I know I spoke with DOT early on when we first started this. And the boundaries, when we replaced the signs, when Mike Parker replaced the flashing signs and we got the updated LEDs, we looked at extending it, and I don't remember what the reasoning was, but they told us where those signs are, that's where they should stay. They're, they're correct, they're correctly placed.
DOT was the ones that said, hey.
Yeah, and they, they provided us a map with it, and it shows like where it's supposed to be, how far out. And the, the lady from DOT that I spoke with said, no, those, that's correct, where they are. It seemed a little short-sighted to me as well.
That's based on the boundary of our school. I mean, talking to DOT.
No, it's based on the distance from the crosswalk. That's the problem. So if we, if you were to put a, I'm sorry.
Add another crosswalk.
If there are a second crosswalk, yes.
Towards where that preschool is, or to the, where the church has a school in the back, right?
Right.
Presbyterian Church has a school also, and we add another cross.
Then it depends on the, because I tried, in working with this, I also looked at, Lakeside Church has a school as well. I looked at, is it possible for State Road 50 to have a school zone? Uh, it depends on how many people are enrolled, uh, are there buses that come to and from? What's the vehicle traffic? Like Lakeside School did not, or Lakeside Church did not fall into it, because they only have 60 students, so, yeah, that was an issue with, with DOT. But, uh, it would seem to me if we put a secondary crosswalk for Oakland Avenue Charter on the west side of the, where the driveway is, that would extend the, the school zone.
And that's, and that's what I'm kind of trying to get to in a roundabout way, is can you go all the way down to, because, look, you've, you've got a cluster of educational facilities right there, right? You got school, you got preschool, you got Lakeside, you have the Presbyterian Church, that all has them. And like I said, you know, I, I see, I'll drive out or I see people walking across the street. And, and, and I think we can all agree, that little jog in Open Avenue at Star is pretty dangerous. Especially if you're trying to come from, are from the south, and you're trying to navigate your way across. So if there's a way to kind of slow those cars down as they're coming east, you know, and hit that flashing light, and then that way.
Certainly something we can look at. I don't think it's real difficult. Um, it's more just working with the, the representative from DOT, working with them and making sure that we are within the measurements of the crosswalk itself. And that was, that was it. They basically said, hey, from the crosswalk, you can only go this far. It's not like we can do the school zone. And say, hey, everybody has to go slow once they hit Tub. Can't do that. It was, it was in relation to where the crosswalk was. We can look at adding a second one.
Correct. Right.
Uh, any other questions regarding?
Miles an hour. Just to let you know, we do have flexible, um, employment options, so if you guys are looking at trying to expand the zone, or we put a pole around, we could do a trailer to start with, like a solar trailer or something like that. As are working on expanding the school zone, and then we could see about putting the permanent placement in once that's done. So we can talk about that once the project's moving forward during the implementation phase. That's what that timeline looks like, and then we'll try to work on, on best.
I'll reach out to DOT tomorrow to find out the possibility of that, adding a second crosswalk. Maybe. Yeah, it's easy.
That trailer's free of charge. Trailer's free of charge.
It's all in, the, the, it's the same pricing regardless of whether we do a trailer or a pole, anything like. Yeah, whatever we need to do to accommodate, we're happy to work with you.
So going back to the fixed poles real quick, so you're, you, you don't attach those cameras, those readers onto the existing flashing light pole? You, you put your own pole? Any questions, guys?
No, just double down. I'll, I'll, I'll double down with the Mac Metro Plan, DOT with Mrs., um, bring that up to her too.
Sure.
For the crosswalk faster.
Sounds good.
Okay, is there a, um, any vote on that, or we're good? We need to vote?
What?
We need to vote.
They need to vote on it, right?
I believe so.
That's the question.
Would anybody like to entertain a motion, please?
I'll second it.
Wait, he's, he's not done yet, hold on.
I'll true mint, say that right?
I'll tell him. Okay, second, anybody?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. Okay. We're losing stragglers. Great. War of attrition right now.
As it is.
Oh, well, I'm doing the best I can. All right, so, uh, approval of a, uh, so next one, Jen, is approval of software license of service agreement between the Town of Oakland and South Central Planning and Development Commission. This is for, uh, building permit, um, software license agreement. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the town staff for several years, um, has been exploring various online permitting software applications uh, to assist in automating and streamlining the building, the building permitting process. Um, our town currently outsources our building official inspection services, uh, to a private company called Willdan. Uh, Willdan recently introduced town staff to South Central Planning and Development Commission, uh, which is located in the state of Louisiana. Uh, this commission is a diverse, ever-changing commission that serves, uh, different constituents, made especially for and by local governments uh, in the South Central region. The, um, commission performs a variety of services to meet the ever-changing needs and challenges, um, of its member governments. Uh, these services include long-range planning, state and federal liaison, current issues, member services, and services to businesses and citizens. Um, this company, or it's not really a company, it's an, and actually a, a form of, uh, quasi judicial government, uh, type board, um, has developed a product that's called My Government Online, uh, which provides a complete permitting software solution to local governments along with all the support necessarily necessary to implement an online permitting, online permitting software system for the town. Um, the commission then charges a monthly fee in accordance with the volume of permits each month. Um, our permit fee, if you'll see. Um, our permitted fee, if you'll see attached, uh, according to our volume of permits for the town would be about two hundred and sixty dollars a month for them to host this software. My Government Online is currently utilized by the city of, uh, Fort Walton Beach, City of Pensacola, City of Sebastian, and various other municipalities. Um, they're actually growing more into Florida, um, and they, we've sat through a seminar with them and a demonstration of their software. Uh, they deal with local governments, the software was developed by local government employees. Uh, when we looked at the software, the software system should keep track of all of our permitting systems, provide the town, um, an online permitting system where they can go on. Uh, with a standard format and you submit for a form, permit online, um, that is then reviewed by the permitting office. Willdan is currently, and then it takes you through all the steps necessary via email, um, and then of course, our building inspection service is all. Apartment, uh, you can also call them, they can walk you through the process on how to fill out. System, it'll keep track of the permits, it'll be licensed to the town, um, so there'll be no. It'll be, town will own basically the information on the software system, and the idea of this, uh, commission was that they wanted to provide low cost, so. They wanna try to get as many towns as possible, um, and so, uh, they don't really see fees, uh, increasing in much, just to give you an example. When I first came onboard, we had, we were trying to design our own permitting, online permitting system, and to be honest, it was a complete mess. Cost, I believe we had about twenty thousand dollars invested in that process, um, that I put on hold. Um, so this, this has come up as an opportunity for the town to automate the, uh, building inspection or building permit. Services for the town, um, the agreement is attached, I'll answer any questions you may have. Um, I think once this gets up and running, it'll be good for our, not only our residents can get on and pull permits on, see permits of houses they pulled, it'll be an easy application for contractors that pull permits. Um, and it'll be good for those outside agencies that typically call the town to ask for permit, and right now we, we operate on. We go through Laserfish and try to find a copy, so allow us to type it in by address, automate the entire permitting. Process and system, uh, so town staff recommends approval of entering into a software agreement with, uh, the South Central Planning and Development Commission. And then we expect probably it takes four to five months to. The health of our contract.
Any questions from you guys?
This system also gonna record like inspection results, like a monitor. Is permits and seed results, inspection results and all that.
It should have every document that's filled out by the building official or inspector should be copied and uploaded to. To the site, you should be able to pull it up by address. It'll be a public database. Resident can just pull that up. Yeah, that was a, the, that was, that software was owned by the building inspection, um, company that we were using, so this will be licensed to the town and that was a recommendation. Town attorney, so we don't run into those again, and so if we were to switch building inspector officials, um, we would still have. That would still be our software.
Cause they owned the, the, the rights themselves before, mainly charged as they wanted. Are we gonna have any other fees besides the monthly fee here?
No, there's no setup fee or no startup fee, no, in, in anytime there's upgrades to the software system, we'll get those automatically. So it's sort of a, a unique arrangement with this commission out of Louisiana, but they have quite a bit of cities, and the larger cities are going with them because it's a lot cheaper. And then they automatically get their upgrades, and their whole goal is to try to keep clients to stay with them.
How soon can this be implemented?
I would say it'd take four to five, four to six months is, would be my guess. The, the, the general format's already there, so it's not like we're recreating the wheel, I'll just have to come in and tailor it to kind of open. Inspection.
In, in this software.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Or a statute, I believe is eventually gonna require all communities have an online permitting.
Um, so I, I had a, uh, com- conversation with Andy, just to clarify some things, and I asked a question about, is the software, uh, owned by the town? Even though we contract with Willdan, if Willdan were to leave or we were to have an in-house, uh, reviewer, that stay with the, with the town? They, they.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a few things, I did go through the contract and I did talk to Stephanie real quick on, on a few things. I just wanna, uh, go through them real quick and just get your guys buy-in or, or your opinion on the, um, on the, uh, one of the items on the termination of the agreement. Um, it, it, it stated termination by the, uh. Software company upon written notice to licensing any of the following events, termination events occur, there's a series of events that are on there, license fails, you fail to pay them, material breach. Uh, not payment, uh, license becomes subject to bankruptcy, that's us, um, or they elect. He likes to refund license fee, uh, the other termination is by us, we can terminate the agreement, uh, at any time, uh, up with written notice, which is, which is good. What I did wanna strike from that, uh, A, Stephanie, I'm sorry, this is, I didn't, this is page eight. We didn't tell you that, and it's the, it's the sentence about provide that no such termination will title licensee to a refund of any portion of the license fee. So if we decide to terminate our agreement, okay. Okay, well. That's how I'm looking. That's just, uh. Um, on.
One second, that means if they, if we terminate them, I mean, the only fee they have is their monthly.
Right, so, but if we terminate them on day five.
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah, correct.
I, I don't want them to sit there, well, in the hopper, we have, well, you haven't really, you're not seeing, we wanna make sure you're not gonna keep that money that. Um, the other one I have was exhibit, uh, uh. Schedule A, and it was onsite visits, there's a, there's a paragraph in here about, they have to make an onsite visit to the town. Uh, they would like us to reimburse them for their stays, their food, their travel. I would like to. If you have a problem with your software and take care of that software, then you need to come out your own. Software. Um, and the last one I have was, uh, C, uh, Schedule C, and it was, uh. Level of, of, of maintenance and support, so there's like a level of service that some people get in a timeframe to that, and there's a tier structure on depending on how they determine. What they feel is critical to us and what's not critical, and they did, they determine that tier, so, um, they have different three tiers. Um, I think Oakland's important, because when you submit a permit, and you know this as well, Rick and Sal, that timing and turnaround is very critical to get that permit out. And I don't believe that a, a, a developer or contractor's permit, um, needs to wait that amount of days in order for this to get issued. So what I'd like to put in there is everything's a tier one, which is, uh, all support should be resolved within twenty-four hours, uh, regardless of what they consider the tier. Um, they have things in here five days, they have things in here, whatever we agree, stuff like that, so it, it's those, uh, those, uh, three items that. We can, I'd like to ask Andy, he goes back to. With those before we sign. And, and, and they may agree to these, or they may not, uh, agree to these, but at least it doesn't hurt.
They may not agree to the twenty-four hours.
They may not.
Experience, but they're not. Building work.
Yeah, that's a lot of money you're wasting and losing. Oh, no, sorry.
They don't agree.
Oh. I, I, I think we just gotta eat it and go, but I, I don't get a purpose just to ask. Try. Well, yeah, cause there's a couple of those, like your second item about travel, I believe that's it, we could put something there, we request them, we should not. We request their. Show us how to use the system. And, uh.
That's why the word if is there, because if, if, you know, we have to be conscious, what's the price too? So we can decide that when they do, it, what's the hourly, what's the price, I mean, we'd have to go through that.
Correct, cause I mean, they.
We don't have to request them.
Yeah.
If, if it's their fault, if the program's not working, they have to, that's what we wanna make sure.
Yeah.
If we request them, then what's the price we're gonna pay and how many hours?
Yeah, it's like a service, right? Service, but taking your car to the dealership, you need service on it, you're gonna say, hey, what's the S M L? What you're gonna do. Um, you know, cause they have things on here like a ten percent extra administration fee if they show up, they have twenty percent, you're gonna pay them if, uh, on top of what they're paying for law. Um, yeah. Kind of where I'm at, sorry.
I have a, a quick question, um, i- if we do negotiate those terms, if that is the direction that we receive from you all tonight, would you, uh, would you. Desire us to bring back the, whatever terms were negotiated so that you can see that before the contract is executed?
I would, yeah, I mean, we, you know, we may send this and they may say, no, this is it, they can pay or leave it, and, and that's just, at least I can, I can sit there and say, hey, we tried to, tried to negotiate and tried to do some.
For five things, we get, we back.
Yeah.
See what we get back.
I would, in that case, I would recommend that you, you, the motion would be to table this, uh, until the next meeting and authorize Andy to negotiate those terms in the meantime.
Right. Um, there's no questions, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, table the approval of the software license and service agreement, and so we.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi, okay, thank you. All right, last m- item on the, oh. Oh, I'm sorry, Ed. Sorry, Ed, go ahead.
Pulikowski, fifty-one Vandermere Street, is there any consideration in this system for importing historical data? So, uh, or is it only forward-looking?
Apparently it'll just be forward-looking, so we do have previous permits and things in a system called Laserfish. Um, but it'll just be from. From this point forward.
So there's no option for them to import that older data into their database?
Yeah, that would have to be done either by the staff or by our existing building contractors, so we, we could work towards. Yeah, we can work towards, uh, taking that old data and putting as much as we can in the system.
Okay, thanks.
Questionnaire, thank you. Okay, so, uh, moving on to, uh, discussion of the charter review commission from our earlier, uh, presentation, um, just piggybacking on this, so Elise, are you presenting this one?
Sure, um, so this is just, I mean, Tom did a really good job going over kind of where we're at and where we need to go. Um, in order to get ready for the charter revision committee, we need to be thinking about how we wanna appoint. Um, the members, right, so each person will be appointing one member, and I just wanna have a discussion tonight, an open discussion about how. You would like to do that or what your thoughts are so that we could be ready to make those appointments in January.
Thanks, okay, gentlemen?
So if we wanna make appointments in January, we probably have. That would be for seven, somebody at our first meeting of the month, three, four, whoever, I reckon, has like people to go.
Who is the thought then that each of us, uh, choose one person, correct? That you like, or do you choose multiple people and interview them as that? Yeah, that's kind of.
We ultimately gonna, oh, each one of us pick someone, Thomas has recommended each one of us pick two, because you don't know, you know, which one will commit or be a good candidate.
Well, that's, yeah.
But in the end, we pick one, and, um, and the service, um, cert, um. Different style of people, background.
Yeah.
Be great, because it was really, really good when we did it, we had, you know, Mike was at Orlando Health, uh, Warren Griffin was an engineer, I was with construction background, it was very the, you know.
Diverse.
Correct, that's what we need to accomplish for us to have a. I think if we asked suggestions of the type of, of background, background that we would like to, you suggest, that, you know, that was the part I was gonna bring up. But just make a suggestion of some of the type of backgrounds that we should try to focus on, whether it's age, demographic, professionalism. Profession, maybe, you know, where they live in the town, how long they lived in the town, things of that nature, so we can just get suggestions of categories. We should try to focus on, and then we can decide on something to, so on. Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Also, what would help too is, is anybody in the town who could still be part of this committee that was already. I know that Fred Shepard's still here, but he's not, you know, he couldn't be able to do it, but Mike Braden, he's still around, and he's part of it. He has experience in it, and he's well-versed in it, I mean, picking someone who already had a, been part of it, we can re. Yeah, but that's adding to type of person.
Correct. So, uh, just to clarify, then each of us would maybe pick two people, correct? And you'd bring them in on the first meeting, first meeting of the, of January or second meeting, second meeting in January. You'd kind of, everybody would get a chance to ask them questions about their background, uh, and, and what they do, and then from that, you would whittle it down to one person out of your two. Is that how you would, would do this?
Now, the way we did it before, we got interviewed one by one, I don't know if you guys remember.
Mm-hmm.
You interviewed me, you, you guys interviewed, I think, ten or twelve, right? And then, however you guys picked it, you guys were witnessing it, and we were interviewed private. One left, left the building, it was like ten-minute interviews, like five-minute interviews, it all happened in one day.
Was that how you wanna, wanna do that way?
It was a good way, I don't know, if you guys, we have a questionnaire too.
Okay. That's what I say. Do not provide those questions to the people.
No.
Hot on the spot, right? So we need to come up with a list of three, five questions?
Like your, your vision of the town.
Yeah.
Sure. Those things, you know, things of that nature.
Is there any chance of finding something like that for, please? Maybe we modify something, make something up?
I have it right here.
Maybe we find that, maybe we use that, maybe modify it to.
Make it more.
Be ten years later.
I'm having a hard time finding background, so whatever he has would be very useful.
Yeah. Some of the. So, so as of right now, between now and the second meeting, uh, each of us go out, we, we find our two, two representatives. Uh, and then we bring them in, and then we ask them a, a, a series of questions, uh, and then from there, in that evening. Narrow it down to the one, the five, the actual five, and then, then go that route, okay? Okay?
They have to be willing, I mean, that's why opportunity two is great. We may approach them, and they may, you, you may be having someone in your mind right now and say, you don't know if you want to commit the whole year, it's a long.
Was it a, a year, a monthly commitment?
It was a monthly commitment, yeah.
Well, and, and, so let me go over timeline real quick in my head, right, so we'll wanna appoint them in January, we're gonna have to start meeting within forty-five days, but I suggest sooner. Because we're gonna want to have them bring everything forward by October. Of twenty twenty-five to make sure that it gets on the ballot for March, so that, that condenses it, so we may have. Twice monthly, three times. So we may have twice monthly, three times monthly, you know, at first to get, to get it through a majority of it and make sure that the public's included.
Should've started this.
Yes.
This year. We're a couple of months. Yeah, we can. But this, the charter doesn't have as much as we had.
Correct. Yes.
Had to be redone from one end to the other. Right. They'll, we'll know, because we adjusted ourselves too when our meetings. We didn't set them all the time. Once we started getting closer to things, we didn't have them. We had to buy monthly first. So they may have them, tell them you're gonna have it by month. When they start figuring out that there's not too much changes to do, go back to the month. Eventually, we give them a deadline.
So, uh, you made a, uh, a comment about Fred Shepard and, and just asked people on the board, is there any opposition to having somebody like a Fred Shepard with historical background or, or insight where you're, he's the Charter Review Emeritus? You know, that's there. So is there any conflict as far as setting that up? Or maybe he just kinda sits there and kinda guides them along? Yeah, he's just kinda there, he's, he's, he's there to bounce things off of to say, hey, what, do you remember what you did here? Do you remember what you thought about here? Hey, do you? I mean, you know, I, I think everybody here can agree, this town's gotten very diverse. Got a very, a lot of. Sit here. It's not the same people. But I don't think it's a bad idea to have somebody like, you know, Fred Shepard.
Fred Shepard.
Sit here and be a part.
Because Frank Merritt's gone, Warren Griffin's gone. I mean, those, those guys are gone. Fred Shepard's still here, but I don't know how much energy he has. Maybe he sits in one or two of them.
Yeah, right. Where he feels like coming to.
That, that could be Mike Braden. Mike Braden could say, hey, look, I don't wanna do it, but I'll be happy to sit there and onboard with him.
There any problems with that, Stephanie, doing something like that?
I think that it would be appropriate for whoever you all want to be involved in the process to be involved in the process.
All right.
Is that the direction?
No?
Clear as mud.
All right, so, so just to recap, what I have is each of us between now and the second meeting, we're going to bring two people in front of the commission.
Okay, so how are we coming up with the questions?
Well, then we'll have, well, when they're in front of us, we'll have to work on, do we want us to submit some questions? And we weed them out, maybe pick three or five of them at one time? And you ask them, each person, the same question, that way it's apples to apples?
I think that's a good idea. I mean, we just, I think we need to have the questions ready before we bring them in front of us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 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 I'm just saying between now and that, in that thing, we'll have the questions all ready to go. We'll be, we'll be prepared and ready for them to come in.
We don't have any other meetings between now and that time, though, right?
We can email you.
We got the first, uh, January, right?
We're planning on bringing him in on the second one. That means we appoint him that same day, then?
I think we have to appoint him, we have to pick the five that night. That's what I was saying is, we weed them out and we pick the five that night. Now, does that become a workshop instead of the regular commission meeting? So maybe we make that a workshop ahead of the commission meeting and we knock it out in an hour. You know? So you're interviewing 10 people?
That makes sense.
Is what we're doing. And then we do the workshop and then we ask them the same questions. That way they're, like I said, apples to apples questions. And you gauge and then we'll rank them and then we'll, uh, you know. But, but I think, you know, I think, uh, you have to pick one of your two.
That's exactly what you guys did. Yeah, workshop at six o'clock. Interviewed us for five minutes, it was in line. We left, you guys gathered your thoughts. Said, all right, I'm into the meeting. You, you and you.
Right. And then we'll just say, hey, come on in, first person individually, second individually. And mix them up and then, you know, and go from there.
Yeah, I think it's important when you talk to them to make sure they have time available because we can't be working around everybody's schedules. You know, they have to have some flexibility. Because whose schedules we're gonna be working around is Wade and Stephanie's to make sure that the attorneys are present so that we can do this properly, especially with some of these complicated things that are probably gonna come forward, right?
Yeah. Okay, works. Ed, did you have something?
Pulikowski, 51 Vandermeer Street. You know, the, we have a process in this town for pointing people to organizations and committee. There's an application that we fill out, uh, that can go out to, um, anybody in the community who might have an interest in serving. Wouldn't that be a good way to, uh, seek interested parties to participate in this commission? To use the process that's already exists?
Pointed. Good point. Can we do that?
Currently in your charter, there is no requirement as to how the appointments need to be made. And that is up to your discretion as well. In fact, I would say that if each commissioner wanted to use a different methodology for selecting his, uh, his appointee, that would be perfectly fine.
Well, that's, I guess, but. We appoint and bring them or?
Apologize, I just turned it off instead of on. Um, if some of you would prefer to see which applicants would be out there and be interested in, in applying, uh, you can certainly set up an application process or direct Elise to do so. And you can choose to, to, um, select your candidate from the applicants. You also wouldn't be bound to do that. You could appoint someone, just if you, if you know them already and you know that they would be a good fit. Um, it really is whatever is your pleasure.
Basically, from whatever applications come in, just like the section 74 says, each commission member shall make one appointment. So we could pick one from there.
Yes.
So we could.
We could listen to someone who's been doing this for 30 something years and use their recommendation. I mean, we can do either way. We had an expert come in here tonight and say, this is how it's normally done around the state. Either way is fine, but, you know, we got, uh, organization that's 100 years old, Florida League of Cities. I mean, it's not like someone trying to, you know, be exclusive. But, but at the same time, you have a process that's been working.
So.
Around the country, around the state.
Are you backing on that? Picking on that, Joseph, I mean, is it worth Andy just reaching out to that gentleman?
Yeah.
I mean, just asking the question, hey, have you, have you seen municipalities that have sent out applications to all residents that are interested? Or have you seen majority of them sit there and go, I want you and I want you?
That's, that's where I'm heading to.
Okay. Um, I, I think that's, that's a very good viable, uh, solution. That do, Elise can do that. Does that do for the? We've had to get, so that's the, that's the thing, is timing is gonna be critical. So. Sure. And Southern. Tell you when February comes. Did things that they thought in a sense and that. Not sure. Here. That, uh, that's idea, there, there. That, that went to a lot of their applications and didn't know. So sure that. Somehow, assess of people could be interested. Not gonna know about this and. You got. Think there's a lot. Think. Nothing much. So they're in. Something is, it's gonna be. Um, different roads. So just because there are not a lot here, doesn't mean they're not interested. See. Some of the. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. You know, you make a good point.
I can make a.
Well, I was gonna say, he makes a good point on this. We're short in time, we should've started this in September. And if we're surrounded by talent and every one of us on this board knows who would be good, bring them and get the process going. We might end up getting people late filling out applications who are maybe, maybe not even part of the town, you know, involvement that much, but they qualify on paper, they may not be involved like they are. I mean, I see people in the audience now that would be good candidates. I mean, they're involved. If they've been following every step, they'd be qualified, in my opinion.
So just for clarification, so even if, if we put out an application, open it up to everybody, um, if a commissioner has somebody that they thought would do a good job, I assume you would give them an application. Um, then they would come back at the next meeting. You would interview them and then you would, each individual commissioner is gonna have to make one appointment, right?
Yes, each commissioner will make his own appointment.
Out of those, if there's 10 people, they're gonna vote on one. Yeah. So, I mean, that's just how it works. I think if I have an open position and I think somebody would be good, I may give them the application, say, hey, apply for the job, you'd be good at it. Yeah. Yeah, I think what you do is, yes, correct. You, you, we, we get the word out as quick as possible, you know, through, through, through. Let me finish my thought. Get the word out as quick as possible through social media or, or, I don't know, put a sign up somewhere that says, if you're interested in, if you're interested in Charter Review Committee, put it out on the road, I don't know. And then out of all those people, let's say you get 50 applicants. Somebody's got to weed it down to 10. Right? So then somebody's gonna, right? Count it, true it.
Running out of time.
So we'll have to, we'll have to weed it down to a, a 10, right? And then you bring in the 10, correct? And then from that 10, you interview those people. This is kind of going off of what Andy said. And then from that 10, we all kind of talk about it and hash it out and then you pick the five.
So how come we don't have the same headache as relates to ARB board and all the different boards that we have? We don't have the same headache and that's open. So I mean, I, I want us to maybe to do this as smooth as quick as possible. But we have, always have a hard time filling out volunteer boards that for years.
I think recently, we've had, uh, we've had a lot of, yeah.
To be committed, so, hey, would you wanna be committed the whole year to this?
Well, I know, I'm on, we're on the same page, I just wanna make sure we're in the same line.
Me too, I wanna streamline.
I'm like.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
For the, I mean, the. By everybody. Talk to fire.
You gotta educate the, I mean, we have dedicated people here that's here almost every time we're here. You still gotta educate them, what is a charter review? I mean, that's.
Well, I think he, Tom said that your, your first meeting when you select your five, they.
Normally for, one time I'd be recruiting people.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta explain to them, I mean, what is a charter review? Yeah, explain to them what, what process is, I mean, we got the holidays in front of us. If, you know, if we know people already besides the getting it out on social media.
Well, I, I think if you do know people, I think if you know people, you should say, hey, go fill an application. And then same with everybody else. Okay, last one.
I'll give it. Um, respectfully, when your position was up for and you put out applications, you got 12 really amazing citizens who jumped on it and said, hey, I wanna be a part of change. Anyway, what I'm saying is you have a lot of talent here and changing the charter is a 10-year commitment. It's not something to half ass just because we're late getting started. I think we owe it to the citizens who have been demanding change for quite a while now to let them have a chance to be, let them have. Right? About all of those people who had a major background in this very diverse. Did you know all of that? No? You didn't. So you owe it to the citizens for a 10-year commitment to give them the opportunity to show up and show up.
All right. Uh, going to the, looking at the calendar, our, our, we had a January 7th is our first meeting of the, the new year. And then the 21st is the second meeting, that would be the workshop meeting. Am I not looking at that right? Second, oh, I'm sorry, it's the second Tuesday, I apologize, the 14th and the 28th, follow the, my apologies. That's even more time. So. Uh, 14th and the 28th. I was looking at the first week. So the, in the question, I guess I, I would throw out there is if you've sent the applications out, um, and you, you notified as many people as you can about it, when would you want those applications due back into you? For us to, by, by the, uh, 17th? Friday, the 17th of January, and then that gives you a week to look at and notify? And then say, hey, on the 28th, every, at six o'clock, you need to show up.
So you're gonna invite everyone who applies to that meeting?
No, I think at that time, you'll, you'll spend that, the, the commission, as Ed said, our responsibility to sit there and weed it out to 10 people. That's his driving unit.
You're gonna do that all at the workshop?
No, 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 no. It would have to be, it would have.
Prior.
Prior to, to the meeting. So, um.
Special.
Yeah, we would sit there and go, I like this guy, this guy.
This is my.
These are my two, here's my two, here's your two, here's your two. That's the 10. I don't, I, unless you have a.
Sounds good.
Easier way to, to do it, and you're opening it up to everybody, I.
I mean, you guys could plan a special meeting for this purpose, right?
Okay. All right, so you've planned, let's say you get 20 applicants that come in, you plan a special meeting. And, and you're right, we could, we could sit there and meet every Tuesday of the month if you want. And then have a special meeting and then say, okay, we got 20. Let's take it down to 10. All right, let's take that 10 down.
You could do that.
Okay, so then I go back to, when's the due date for the applications?
When do you want your special meeting?
Well, we'll also put out like the expectations, right, Elise, like.
Yeah, we'd, we would have to have some kind of a, you know. Yeah, we'd, we would have to have some kind of a, you know, cover summary of this is what it is and put all that out there as we're advertising.
So that's four weeks.
Yeah, over the holidays.
Your, 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 your application has to be turned into the town by the fourteenth of January.
Not if you guys want to see it on the fourteenth.
Exactly.
Your application has to be turned in by the tenth.
The seventh.
If they're turned in by the fourteenth. Don't involve another meeting.
Twenty.
Yes, so we.
You know what I'm saying? If we, they're all in by fourteen.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Ten and a.
That five you would point that at, at the commission.
Hit that again.
Everybody's due on the fourteenth. Fourteenth, you got to walk the path.
Twenty-first.
Bring, refile it down to.
You bring twenty people, how many people in? You bring everybody, yeah.
So how about we have them do on the thirteenth? Then I can give them all to you guys on the fourteenth, right? Do that. Um, pack it so that you guys could start reviewing them. Yes. I mean, as part of, as part of the meeting and then. And then we can have a meeting on the twenty-first, right, and the twenty.
Oh, we're not done yet. No, no, you can't go home. You have to, we have to, you have to hear, you have to stay for the closing stuff. Come on, we're not done. We're, we got another hour. Come on. Come on.
Well, if you are going to leave, my part of saying something in our minutes was thank you uh, for the um, great, it was really cool the way it worked out.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Merry Christmas to you guys. Thank you.
That's right. Past bedtime there.
Okay, so you want to recap or you got it? Okay. Okay. That matters close, right? We're done? Okay. God. All right, Andy, bring us home.
I have no report this evening.
There's a really good answer.
Thanks. All right, Jessica. Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Just thank you. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. Um, thank you to the Coxes. We had a great weekend. We're gonna do it again for Heritage Day in a month.
Did the Vice Mayor do?
Um, he looks a lot like his cousin. I don't know.
No, you didn't do anything.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jessica. Chief. Oh, sorry, Mike. I, I got my glasses off.
I got nothing. Have a good Christmas. Thanks for being safe.
All right.
Okay, I've got, I've got several items I want to go over.
None of which.
And, and since the Lake Apopka Natural Gas Guy left, I'll, I'll dismiss that one, so. That again. Um, tomorrow, uh, the town Public Works Department is um. Uh, sponsoring a workshop here with FDEP uh, for the MS four permit. You know, that we, that we are working under. Uh, the MS four stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. That's MS, MS four. Um, we've got certain criteria that we have to meet. I think there's like twenty, twenty-five different criteria that we have to meet each year. Um, we're coming up, do an audit in uh, March or April of twenty twenty-five. And this is a workshop prior to that audit. Um, so tomorrow we'll have representatives in from about fifteen different uh, central Florida cities. Um, who have the same uh, permit requirements that we do. So kind of workshopping and, and um, and discussing that and getting ready for this audit. Um, number two, um, I was notified today by Mark Grandenberg with the uh, St. John's River Water Management District. That they've uh, opened up their cost share grant program uh, about a month early this, this time around. Um, you may recall last year, uh, we submitted for one point five million to round out the four million that we already have uh, secured for the alternative water project. Um, so I will be resubmitting. Basically, we're going to freshen up that grant application, get it in and uh, you know, we'll find out next summer sometime probably. I think, I think they have their um, their meeting for uh, you know, choosing who, you know, who gets grant money and who doesn't uh, in April. So we'll, you know. We're looking good for that. Um, and then the FEMA and the FDM, Florida Department of Emergency Management uh, grant. Um, everything's looking good with that. We're meeting with um. Uh, with the FEMA um, caseworker, if you will, uh, on a regular basis now. Um, it looks like between the town and the Oakland Nature Preserve, we have about two hundred and seventy-five thousand uh, in grant uh, money that we're gonna ask for. And um, I mean, it's all looking good, but you never know till, till you know. That's all I have.
Thanks. Please? Nothing? Okay. I don't think I missed anybody. All right. Hey, Rick.
Uh, just one thing, uh. Oakland Nature Preserve, we have the repairs completed. I got one thing. Um, gentleman Eric, who takes care of the VE's programs over there at uh, Metro Plan. He asked them, I requested for him to come sometime next year. Maybe in the second, third, after we're past being real busy. Um, to come educate us on the different options for us to make a profit center out of having EV stations. That he's seen around the state with different cities, towns, villages. And there's multiple options from us uh, making our own, you know, picking a piece of property like right off the exit. Say, just using hyperbole next to racetrack or seven eleven. It's a property that we develop, we manage, we profit center from it or options of someone else doing it and we just. We're like the landlords. Rules for them, of what boundaries they have, and then we just profit as a landlord. So he'll come explain. I told him, you know, sometime next year, come educate all of us where our options are for us to make a profit center. This coming everywhere right now. It's becoming, and then also options of making it a part of the mandate to anybody who puts a gas station. Plans. Family. I mean, we didn't do it now for these, but we could do it. That's coming. Uh, business. Now, fun. Thank you very much for the staff. Saturday was awesome. You guys did great. Merry Christmas. Everyone of you guys have a happy evening. So just two quick things. The Florida League of Cities um, Policy Committee that I serve on is called a Development Code Compliance and Redevelopment Committee. Did pass their two policy um, positions. So one was affordable housing. And the other was impact fees that we were a part of telling the story and, and helping them um, you know, build. As one of the main. Policy committees and policy uh, statements. So impact fee statement, I just read it out. Florida League of Cities supports municipal authority to set adequate impact fees. Which ensures that new development fairly contribute to the infrastructure that we require. Taxpayers from, so the Florida League of Cities with the other committees will be pushing. This uh, position which. Successful can really help us to use our energy. Other areas. And I mentioned the fourth thing, Andy, for helping me construct the, the argument for it and. Show that several cities that was in that committee. And the second part, just want to add on to. Uh, Commissioner Ramos. Vice Mayor was on Metro Plan. I was on Metro. Now Ramos was on Metro. Metro Plan talking about transportation throughout the entire area. So that has always been a conversation, not just the main areas, not the street, street, uh, street, whatever it's called. It's for the main thoroughfare. These other streets have to come with development. So there's been discussion. Now, you know, I think um, Mike can testify to. It's always a big joke that McMullin is very concerned about connecting. The west side, you know, this side from over there because there's no way. So our challenge really right now is. Highway fifty, which is owned by the state. Then that property across the street next to Palm Casual, because there's been discussion of putting a road straight. So there's been discussion about making sure that we. From that side to this side for years. Now, development's coming in. Now we're seeing some possibilities that we can make. So trust me, that's been a discussion at this table and I've been the one that's been championing that. And you know, we only can bring that up when we can have someone help develop. Excuse me? So, 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 so that was a, I'll be honest with you, that was something that someone mentioned one time before, but. You know, again, property across the street. Private, not ours. So we can't, we, and if we were to try to get from that side to this side. Highway fifty and. Only way. So there'll be, that's developed. Something. That's why we make sure that was clear. You may not hear it a lot. But that's been discussed. Great deal. Two, two Zoom meetings at the same time.
You, thank you. Again, just thanks staff. Jessica did a great job. Chief, your guys out there. Closing the roads, opening the roads. And link crowd control, right? Fire extinguishers, fire extinguishers. Mike, uh, convey to your guys, great job getting out there, getting it set up. I know you guys worked hard, so that's always a, a great event. Looking forward to the uh, Heritage Day uh, when it, when it comes up too as well. So again, uh, just Merry Christmas there. Thank you. Joseph?
If all hearts and minds are satisfied, let's adjourn. Happy holidays. It's nine forty-three.
No, no way.